So get the carpal tunnel fixed first. See how much good that does.
Does your hand go numb?
Yeah, it gets so it's uh it gets tingly numb and then it'll also feel like it's on fire. It's burns like a bummer.
Yeah.
So.
I used to get that.
Hard to get any sleep is the issue.
Yeah, I used to get that when I um did online teaching. When I had to teach online, just your your hand is always on the mask after, you know, ten fifteen hours of that. If I wanted that seat, I was running into that position.
He's a pointy chest.
Yeah. Guys, enjoy.
Hi, Shalys.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready, Carrie, let me know.
Okay. Over here, I am good.
You got it recording?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repose it in the wishes stands. One mission under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mokler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Could could I add something?
Well, we can.
Can you? Could you? Um, can we talk about Deputy State Attorney's salary and uh summer interns for the SDA office?
You just want to put that down as a discussion item? Because we probably will we make a decision? Do you want us to make a decision today?
Um, not necessarily.
Or do you want it actually on the agenda?
Um. It could probably wait till next time, but yeah, a discussion item would be good.
Okay.
Okay, move to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion item for the State's Attorney's Office.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion approved. Approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard?
Uh, yes, I'd like to speak. Jerry Wilson.
Go ahead.
Um, I've uh been a little bit disturbed uh recently by uh reading that uh commissioners have been utilizing the visitors to be heard uh part of the meeting uh for what I consider sort of inappropriate uses. The commissioners obviously set the agenda, control the agenda, and have the uh the power to uh say what they want to say uh during meetings. I think that visitors to be heard should be reserved for citizens who are not commissioners. And I was particularly disturbed uh by uh a session earlier this month in which uh Chairman Mokler used this portion of the meeting to attack a fellow commissioner because she uh had disagreed with him. I served on the commission uh and during the years I served, we of course had many disagreements. And uh the effort was always to reach consensus, which is as it should be. But in the end, if we couldn't reach consensus, we uh held a vote and the majority ruled. But never once did I hear anyone suggest that another commissioner should not uh express their point of view in any forum. Uh, that in fact is guaranteed by the First Amendment. And to suggest that uh another commissioner should be silent and, you know, not speak out if they disagree with the chairman or any other but uh person on the commission, I think is not appropriate. And I hope that uh in the future, uh we won't witness uh this kind of disrespect uh from one commissioner to another. Thank you.
Any other visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Lauren. Quarterly report.
I believe you guys all have this on your computer. I don't have a ton for February, March, and April because schools and libraries are still closed to most visitors. So I haven't been doing a lot of outside programming. I did do a couple of trainings for um youth for the quality care of animals. They need to have that training to be able to show their animals at the fair in the summer. And I've been to a club meeting and we started back with our junior leaders. That's for youth who are ages thirteen and older. Um, in April, Raven and I both went to a fair entry and 4H online training. Those are the programs we use to register kids in 4H and to get their projects entered for the fair. And that was in Huron, so that was good for her to be able to learn those. And then we started planning for summer, so I've got lots of upcoming stuff, as you can see. So I'll have pictures next time for you guys. I know you like those. Um. I don't know if there's anything big coming up. You guys can read those upcoming events and then I'll move them to my next quarterly report also. Um, Raven has been doing well, really happy with her so far.
Good.
She's been on top of stuff, started updating our new handbook, our old handbook, which that's something that has needed to be done for a while. So that's been really good. Uh, this last weekend was state shoot in Pier and we sent twenty kids from Clay County. So that is a pretty good representation, especially considering the year that they've had with they've had to limit the number of kids just because our space is not big enough. So I feel like twenty is a good showing for them this year. Do you you're, did you go this weekend? No, okay.
Is that all just archery or is it others?
They it's archery and BB gun for this one. Um, fall state shoot is when they can do shotgun, so it's twice a year. Yep, um, but we didn't, I don't think anybody went for BB gun this year. It was all archery kids.
Wow.
I did go. Yeah. I woke up from that morning.
Yeah. You guys went up just for the day? That's a quick, that's a quick trip.
We left at four, got there for her to shoot and turned around and drove home.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw her score on the website, but good.
Got home and worked and then the next day was prom, we got work after prom.
Uh huh.
Your mic on, Travis?
No, I'm just complaining. I didn't figure you'd wanna hear it.
Too hard to to up here and back?
Yeah. Here and back in the morning and then prom the next day with after prom till five in the morning.
Ouch, okay, no wonder you're complaining, okay.
What you do for kids?
Yes.
Um, that's pretty much all that has been going on so far. The um Vensons, that's the company that you guys approved to do the termites. They are coming this week on Friday. Um, they've got some sort of machine that like trenches and injects into the ground. And I'm going to be at the office on Friday so that I can ask them to come back and inspect whenever they think that that's appropriate. Yesterday, it was obviously very warm out and Raven said that they were coming out the outside of the building and like the ones that have wings are flying away. So I'm also gonna ask him to inspect the rest of the buildings on the fairgrounds because he said that that would be a wise idea. Yeah, um, they it's where the bill inside has gotten, the holes are worse since the last time that you guys saw them too. So they've been active in there. I don't know about, I have not started asking anybody for to come in and get quotes to start ripping stuff apart. I don't know if you guys have any suggestions for anybody to assess that. And I'm not sure when we will do that because Benson's told me that it takes two to three months for that poison to get to the colony. And then that's when they start to die. So I don't really want to start ripping the walls apart until that's happened because I don't want them loose in the office. And then so by that point though, it's gonna be July, which is right in the middle of our busy season. So I'm not, I don't know if we should wait until after state fair in September. I don't really want people coming into our building all summer to get forms and turn stuff in and then have the building in a disaster.
Yeah, I think we should get wait and get ahead of the bugs and then hopefully building costs will calm down.
This is also true.
And then we can hire it to be done during the winter time.
Okay. Yeah, if you guys have any suggestions on anybody who will do a job like that, I would take those too. Uh, I know like the big companies in town, it's hard to get them to come give a bid for something small like that, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm not sure who you're right at the moment.
Yeah, if you think of anybody, just email me or Raven.
Sounds good, anything else?
Oh, I don't have anything else unless you guys have questions.
No, we just need to approve the Benson.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve the Benson contract.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further cons? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
So the idea behind it is you're gonna have to tear it out and then put it back in.
I think so, uh, from what I understand from the, we've had four people come in and bid, so we've heard stuff from all of them. So the outside wall is like brick cinder block all the way up, but then on two sides of our building is um, there must be some sort of framing be or an insulation because that's what the siding attaches to. And on the inside, there's like one by framing with a layer of insulation and then drywall. And then it's wood paneling on top of that. And according to some of those companies, the termites will eat drywall and the drywall is gone in that wall behind the office there because they've ate it all. So, yeah, I don't know how extensive it is. Uh, Raven's been doing a lot of research on termites and she said that she read um, by the time you see them come out of the wall, like they could have been in there for like five to ten years, if not more, before we caught them. And for them to eat that much drywall, I mean, it's had to have been a while, so.
I actually have a guy that's gonna do some work for me uh to remodel the bathroom and stuff, so I'll ask him when he's over. He's an actor, Mike Colt.
Okay.
I'll talk to him when he's over here. He comes over on my project potentially here. I'll see, maybe I'll have him come out and take a look at it. Cause I know he, him and his son do it.
Okay. That'd be nice.
Do we need paneling back up or can we just sheet rock texture and paint?
We can just sheet rock texture and paint, I think, if we can find, there's not a lot of people around here who like to do that either, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed to put sheet rock up and then put old pant, you know.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of reason, I don't think, to do that unless, I don't know why they would have done that in the first place because I was surprised that there was sheet rock back there anyway, but.
Well, I'm sure it was sheet rocked and then paneling came in and.
Right.
Everybody handled everything.
But I don't think this is, that's also true. I don't know why they didn't tape in mud though. It's just sheet rock with the paneling.
It's kind of what they used to do back in the seventies, I think, and and the early eighties when that was popular.
Yeah.
Everywhere, yeah. Public buildings, private houses, covered with, yeah, paneling.
Yeah, over, over the years, sheet uh sheet rocks required for fire suppression. But uh uh paneling historically has been cheap and easy. Anybody can hang to that, but takes a little more skill to finish a sheet rock surface.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Lauren.
Dennis.
I guess it's on now.
Yeah.
Uh, I just got a two thousand two GMC spray truck that wanted surplus. We've already purchased this, the new truck and it's getting a flatbed put on it right now and their sprayer is ready to put on it when the flatbed is done. There will be also, uh, there's five hundred gallon tank, four horse hose reels, uh, two old pumps for parts. I did surplus some of that last year, but then they didn't have the sale, so it's on this sale.
We need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion that we surplus it.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
So I haven't.
Thank you.
Other than I'm having a hard time finding somewhere to help, but uh I had the job posted for a month and nobody's applied. We, we uh did put an ad in the paper to see if that helps a little bit.
You looking for one or two?
Two, for sure. I've got one returnee, uh, this will be her fourth year and she's really good, which makes me feel good.
Tell her to bring somebody.
Yeah, that's usually your best bet. It's tough to find, find labor now.
But thank you.
You bet, thanks, guys.
Lane.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting Dennis to end so quickly. Uh, let's see, this one is the quarterly report, I believe Carrie sent it all out to you, so needed to approve, but we'll take any questions, comments, concerns, complaints, whatever you have prior, if you need to.
Looks like you've been a busy guy. I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
Well done, Lane.
Here to to sign?
Uh, there should be a signature page in there somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, there's a single signature page in there.
Should be the very first page of it.
I might have gotten things a little bit out of order, but. It's not that one. I can look through and find it for you.
Yeah, it's up near the top. It's on page eleven, I think. Yeah.
Hello.
Good, I'm not losing my mind.
Authorized to sign anyway, so.
Yeah, we'll just get it after the meeting, Carrie.
And Carrie, once, once it's signed, you can just go ahead and scan it, email it to me. They don't need original copy anymore, so.
I will do that.
And yeah, there's a spot for you on it too.
Anything else, Lane?
Uh, don't believe so, but we'll be sticking around for the other stuff. Um, Amanda Vander Platts from here will be, she's playing on being on for the ditch board discussion to let you guys know about the their famous perspective on the authority of the ditch board and all that, so. Okay, I'll stick around for that.
Sounds good. Uh, is everybody here for the public transit?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead with that. Who wants to start or what's the?
Well, this is Yunnella, who's the, I'm not gonna say your last name, Yunnella, cause I can't say it right. And this is Barb, and I can't remember your last. Baleski, okay? So they, Barb is the director of the transportation of the land, city transit. And Yunnella is the uh director at SEDSEC. So I'm gonna let them explain where they're at. If that's all right.
Yeah, is the button up for the microphone?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. So, you know, um, we came here today because we, we have this barn question, you know, for VPT and and the use of it. And we start looking into the agreement, you know, because Clay County has contacted us that we need to evacuate the the building for the Clay County Fair. And, you know, based on what we have, you know, um, any contract, you know, in between the city or asset agency with a third party has to have uh written approval from the state. So we're missing that piece of it. So we start looking into where is that contract, right? So uh we couldn't find any, so we reach out to the state and we reach out to them because if we don't have a written agreement, you know, in writing from the state, Vermillion Public Transit can lose the funding. So we can lose all the money, all the funding for for the public transit, and we don't want that. So we reach out to the state. About two weeks ago, you know, we had a phone phone conference, you know, this has been going for a while, you know, uh, and we did talk to Rich Leonard's, Jack Duncan and Doug uh Gorham were on the phone call with us with Barbara and I. So uh they've been doing research at their end, you know, they, there is no such agreement. So with that being said, you know, the agreement in between the city and the Clay County where the Clay County is requesting the use of the barn one week during the Clay County Fair and any additional week at any time during the the year. It shouldn't have been signed in the first place without the state approval. So uh I did bring a copy of the agreement, you know, what is the agreement in between the city, the Clay County and us. And it says very clear that we can lose the funds, you know, if this barn is used at any time for any other purpose, you know, other than transportation. So I can, I can give you a copy if you would like to see that, um, but on that one, you know, the state came back and said, we are ready to send a letter, you know, to say no one can use this, the the barn except Vermillion Public Transit. To which Barbara and I were like, well, Vermillion is a small town, you know, we don't wanna play nice with everybody, you know, and we were trying to talk to to Rich, who is the lead of transit. Um, so give us a chance, you know, to to come to the table with the city and the Clay County and uh and work something out, you know, so they are willing to give us to us. But there are going to be some conditions, you know, um, and there are some, some questions. The condition will be we don't understand why we need to take the buses out on a Monday night, to be honest with you, when the fair starts later in the week, like Thursday, you know. Uh, we just exposed our buses to to damage, you know, we don't know if it's going to be a storm, if there is going to be hail damage, are they gonna be vandalized? Who's gonna pay for those buses? We have five buses that total about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you know. The ci- the state made it very clear, they are not going to pay for any repairs or any replacements. So who's gonna pay if that's going to happen? Also, you know, we feel like it's gonna be a big liability for us, what is going to happen and who's going to be responsible if something is going to get hurt into that barn during that week, you know. We have a wash car, you know, in that barn that cannot be removed, you know, we can secure it, but it's, it can be vandalized too. So uh, you know, we, we talked to to them about all of those issues and they made it very clear they are not going to to do anything about it. It's on us if something happens. Uh, and that's why they want to to say no to any other use of the building. We uh, we also reached out to the, our insurance, you know, company and I did send you uh what they suggested, you know, it's kind of like a contract in between the three parties if we decide to go this way. Where we are going to be released of any responsibility in case that during the Clay County Fair, something happens on this federal building or something happens to to the buses or who's gonna, who's gonna pay for it? You know, it's, it's huge. So our proposal to you is um, we wanna, you wanna play nice, you know, and say you guys can use the barn, you know, for the Clay County Fair from Wednesday till the end of the fair, you know, for three days only. We don't see a reason why we need to leave on Monday and expose our buses out, you know. I know one of the, one of the responses that we got in the past was that that's how volunteers can do it. In our opinion, it's not a good enough reason because we're exposing these buses, we have no, no shelter for them of any kind. And that barn stays empty until probably Wednesday night or Thursday morning, nobody goes into there. So I think probably like a little bit of better planning if we wish, you know, that would take care of this problem. Um, also, you know, we like to come up with idea and some, and we talked with with John, you know, um, maybe we can storm some ideas that we can find a shelter for those buses, you know, uh, for those three days. Either at a farm, you know, I don't know, maybe the firehouse, I don't know, you know, the garage, somewhere that we can put them in case of a storm and they are safe, you know, they don't get vandalized. So um, they are, Rich and Jack and Doug, you know, they are open to this idea, you know, um, and also giving it completely out of that extra week at any time during the year. So we are willing to to work for the Clay County only three days and get rid of the other, the other week. If we can't meet those conditions, you know, um, the state and us are not willing to to take this responsibility because we don't know what this is gonna happen. You guys can come in the middle of January and say, hey, I need the, I need the buses, you know, the barn, get out in the middle of the winter and what am I gonna do with five buses, you know? And this is something that I know we've been working on it in the past, but it took a long time to get all the pieces together to to have all the facts. And looking at this agreement, this twenty-five year contract in between the city and Clay County should have not been signed without the state written approval.
Okay, so the first question is they have you move out Monday night or Monday during the day so we can set up for the fair. Cause the fair might only be three days, but there's more work behind the scenes and Sunday's cleanup day. So there's still be stuff in there on Sunday. So it's, it, it would have to be longer than three days if we agreed to that, but when Monday's setup day, I think the week is is what they need. And then getting back to before the building was ever built, the, they came to this agreement. Otherwise, the building would have never been built there.
It's not what it says in this agreement and, you know, I hear what you're saying. It's not what it says in this agreement, you know.
Well, no, but it would have been in the amendment on the two thousand four one. This one got signed in two thousand nineteen, this is just a.
No, this is the agreement in between, this is the agreement of construction of. No, this is the agreement in between, this is the agreement of construction of the bus barn and it is from two thousand and three. And it has another one that is from two thousand and nine, you know, that was an amendment. Pretty much the rules are the same. I'm not talking about the. Agreement in between the Clay County and the city only, I'm talking about the agreement in between. The state. Says that for Vermillion Public Transit and the city.
Okay, but.
In that in that agreement, it says very clear that none of the parties, city of Vermillion or SEDC can enter in any contract. Without written approval from the from the state.
But without approval from the county, that building would have never been able to be built on that since there was an agreement in place, a rental agreement. So somewhere along the line.
Yeah, it does says that Clay County donated the the ground, you know.
The county doesn't own the ground, we just rented.
The city, yes, and it uses a twenty percent the match, you know. And then we pay like a dollar list, you know, for for the building. But it also says. If you look. Contract under this agreement that. None of us. Can enter in a contract without their written approval, it also says termination. It says for the state, it says state may by written notice to city and agency terminate project and cancel this agreement. For any of the following reason. City discontinues the use of project equipment, bus barn for the purpose of providing transportation services to the citizen of Vermillion at any time during his useful life. It also says that city or agency take any actions pertaining to this agreement without the approval of state and which under the procedures of this agreement. We have required. The approval of the state. So here it says. The city, you know, under. Under the rules, it says that the city should immediately notify state in all cases where project, the bus barn is used in a matter substantially different. From that described in the project application, which is public transportation. So fair, the the fair. It's far from. From its use.
Okay, so the point I'm trying to make though is. It's it's on the city, the city messed up somewhere. John, I don't even think you were manager at the time.
No, no, none of us were at that time involved with this, but this.
Because there was already a rental agreement from nineteen seventy-seven. Between the county and the city for that property. So the county has the property and the only way that that could be built on there. Was because of the amendment that the county agreed to give up that piece of property for the two week agreement. So the city. Failed on their end if they needed to notify somebody. And that that building was only supposed to be used for state. Because I mean, otherwise that building would not have been able to be built there.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would love to hear from John to. What your your view is of the situation and any suggestions you have.
I guess, I mean, I do think we're all kind of in a pickle here, I mean, we need public transportation. Well, three hundred sixty-five days of the year, not that they're, but three hundred fifty days of the year, they're minus holidays and so forth. And we need public transportation, so I I do think we're in a pickle here what we do. I respect that my question a little bit. With Chairman Mockler's comment there, because the agreement says that the transit garage will be used during the county fair. So you use the words during the fair. So I don't know if setup days before that are.
Two days before.
Okay, I mean, I just don't know if those are quote unquote definitions during the county fair, that'd be more legal interpretation than I would ever wanna do.
Well, it says the week of.
No, the agreement nineteen twenty nineteen says. Clay County Fair Association can utilize the transit garage during the county fair. And one additional week of the year as an additional exhibit building, and I believe that goes back to the dog show.
Yep.
I was here for the dog show, I remember that vaguely, but. So it just says during the county fair, it doesn't say the week, so I do think there's some interpretation as to how that is. I I guess what I'm trying to figure is I think. I I think we should, we need to try to figure out a way to work together and how we can do this. I apologize. I can't remember what's in the bus barn. Two years ago, over those days, I mean, I. Can somebody help me out, what what is there, is there, could we as a community figure out something that'd be easier to move in and out of that space during that time? I just simply can't remember what's in there.
Uh, it's like. I wanna, if I remember, miss a year on here, you know exactly what's in that bus barn during the fair, right?
Uh, it'd be vendors.
Vendors. So like. Nut sales, jewelry.
Yes, I do remember, okay.
Politicians.
Well, we can get rid of them.
So I I guess maybe if it is. Politicians, and they might need two days to set up beforehand.
Right.
And I I'm sorry, you're saying there's like, is it a wash rack? Okay.
I'm a cat trucker.
We'll make sure that we're working together to protect the assets that are not movable during that time. So I I mean, I I guess I I don't have a hard and fast super suggestion, but I just think that. This is too important for us not to figure out a way to make it happen. I do think we are a bit of a pickle because we don't want the state to say, no way, nothing, and then. The fair has lost a billion or we've lost public transit, I mean, I think either one of those is now the road to go now. So there's five buses that we created to figure out a way to store for a couple of days. And I don't think that's impossible to do, but I think maybe it's something we should take a look at. What is a longer term solution to this, and we're probably pushing the envelope in terms of what we can do for this office. But let's figure out a way to make this work for both parties contributing something forward.
So so really, you're asked.
It is.
Five plus.
And and so your ask is essentially to create a situation that the state would approve. By finding safe spaces for five buses for the period of time that the fair is using, using the building.
Yes.
I don't know, is is there anything, you know, in highway maintenance? You know, any any spaces where buses could fit?
She's asking a question.
Yeah.
What about at the city?
I was thinking.
You guys got the city billing? City maintenance?
We would just have to work out, because if employees responding on call after hours for something. That they respond there to that building that they would have to be able to get out of the pickup or whichever piece of equipment it is. And so where would be where they'd be parked yet? And if you if you've been in that space where we have the vehicles that usually come in from the north and the vehicles are angled towards the south. About the only spot, so we left would be down the middle there. So we would need to make sure that if that was the case, that if you have five buses that goes on call, vehicles can get out or. The keys are left in them so they could move the buses out if they had to, I mean, that's just, you know.
Well, my question is, you got the impound lot there. We could put them in there if they knew a storm was coming up, then they could be, if there was room to move them into the building.
Oh, I had no.
You know what I'm saying? You put them in the impound lot when the when the weather was, if the weather was fine, you just put them in the impound lot, they're locked in. So nobody actually can get in to vandalize them. And then if they knew a storm was coming up, then if we can move them inside. So you wouldn't actually have to have them inside all the time, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
It's it depends, I don't see an issue at all.
No, I don't either, that's why I was getting at, because that would take away the vandalism part and hope we don't have a storm coming up during that period of time. Okay, well. I know you they're gonna need more than three days, I I know you do too. Yeah, cuz so is there somewhere we could hit in the middle here, say, instead of, say, they could set up like on Tuesday afternoon or something? And then they go from Tuesday till Sunday? I mean, is that workable instead of Monday, you'd have all Monday in there? And then Tuesday, Tuesday, after Tuesday, and actually you'd have Tuesday morning and then move out of there on Tuesday and then you'd have. So you wouldn't be in there on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then you'd be back on Monday.
They're usually out by noon on Sunday, so.
Okay, so you can move back in on Sunday at noon then, I'm just saying if we can find a compromise here in the middle somewhere. You know, I I understand what you're saying on Monday, but you know, and and I know you guys want, and the prayer board wants Monday. I don't know how much there is to move in and out, I don't have nothing idea on that. I mean, I don't think there's much for you guys to move out.
There's a lot for us to put away.
Yeah, yeah, you have to put that away. Right, right. Yeah, that at all, you gotta put all that away, so that takes some time. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out something here in the middle of the road. I think we can, if we could go to the impound lot, would have been the outside and then maybe work something, you know.
Yeah, that's that's the variable that I'd have to do some work on.
Right.
I don't. I know where the vehicles go, but I don't know exactly which ones come out, you know, in certain situations.
Right, right.
And five buses and and how far down that space it will go.
Are are all five buses used daily then, too?
Not not all five of them.
Uh huh.
At the height of the day, we use three.
So maybe we could hide away ones in a less. Accessible spot, a couple of those, you know, and the ones that are in use have that would be more accessible, say in the impound lot or. Out at the maintenance, maintenance building.
Out of the county.
And the main main thing is to get them in out of the weather, we need probably twelve by twelve doors to get them in and out is the the main. Problem.
And. I believe that I'm measuring that the that space would accommodate a twelve by twelve. I mean, those doors are twelve by twelve.
A little taller than that.
Yeah, I say, I don't I don't see that as an issue, it's just to me, when you stack them or line them up end to end. How that, how deep that goes, how that impacts.
Yeah, they're probably forty feet long a piece or close to it. Yeah, I've just been measuring my own, so fitting them in my own building. So I can understand that part.
I think I heard another location.
Well, I I have been thinking that, you know, especially for those that are out of service, you know, I could, I could probably. For free. Store a cup, probably, yeah, two of them, two of them wouldn't quite fit, but I know one would. Have to move some of Sarah's junk.
It is possible we could maybe take one out to the county.
Well, in in climate weather. Our shop is overfull.
Okay.
I mean, we try to run everything with windows, windshield.
Right.
And but the the new addition onto the weed building maybe could handle two, but I don't know. When that's gonna be built.
Oh, yeah.
And same way with the weed department. You know, we get bad weather, we run everything in with plastic tanks and it kinda. In case of hailstorm, same difference, you know, we don't wanna get them. Damage, but we're pretty much over capacity for. Vehicles, but like I said. We could possibly take two, but our building's only forty feet wide and it's only gonna have an either a ten or eleven foot door in it, so. Tall.
Yeah, I've got fourteen by fourteen doors in both ends of my building and is if Dick Sunday, my insurance agent goes along with something like that, I'd be happy to help, you know, but.
Yeah.
He may have a thought about that.
The airport?
Hangers.
Those are all privately owned, yeah, okay, so I don't. You have, those have to work out with those individuals.
Yeah, the main buildings, the cities, isn't it?
It is, but that's under a lease, so the spot actually, the door is not part of ours.
Okay.
It's our property.
Yeah.
Another lease.
Understood. So we're willing to help, but how 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 we can help, you know, is another question here.
So you know, for Rich, you know, from the state. If we're going to decide, and I want to be upfront with you and and let you know that expectation. If we are going to decide this is the the route we're gonna go. They will put the director of public transit in charge of it. So. Public transit is going to make the rules and we're going to agree to those things. If we can't agree to it, then then because it's a federal building and they pay for it, they did say. We're out. You know, it's like we're going to send a letter and nothing is gonna happen and I lose funds and trust me, I don't wanna do that. We do not wanna do that, and I don't think anybody in this room wants to to lose public transit. We need to get back to them and tell them what the discussion is, how it is going, and then they'll make a decision. So I think we. We can work to like how you said, you know, like Tuesday till Sunday at noon and then we can move our buses back into it by Sunday night. Well, we're willing to do that and we can take that to to the state. We do not want to agree to another another extra week. At any time during during the year. So we want that to be. Taken out. Because it's it's very hard. And also we have to, we have to talk about. Who's going to be responsible if something happens in that timeframe? At the bar, what if a person gets hurt, what if? The wash machine, you know, like the the system gets vandalized, what if the buses get vandalized and they are not going to be, if we're going to find a shelter? But those are. Those are huge liabilities to us, you know, and it did not happen in the last. Two years, but maybe it's just. We're just lucky, we don't know that and we don't want to get that liability on us because. We don't have to, we don't have the money to replace it, first of all. So it's like a Vermillion Public Transit alone, we we don't have that kind of money to replace those things. And the state made it very clear, they are not going to pay for any repairs or any replacements.
What's our legal? I know she's ditching.
So I mean, I have a couple of thoughts on this, number one, as far as liability during the time that it's used by the county, it's pretty clear to me from our lease agreement with the city that we. Responsible for anything. I mean, subsection four, item number four in our lease agreement, the leasing shall and does hereby assume all risk of loss or injury to the property of persons. Being upon or coming upon the leased property. Except persons serving in the capacity of the agents of the lessor, et cetera, et cetera. So you know, if the city were to get sued and then I think by extension. SEDC in that regard, public transit. During the time that that the county is in use of that, we've agreed to assume all risk of loss or injury. So I mean, if things aren't properly stored, put away, that's on us. So that's why I would say that, now, as far as loss or damage to the buses itself. That's, I mean, if if the buses are damaged because of weather and those types of things, that's something that. Your guys' insurance company and all of that needs to work out, and if it's something they're saying they won't cover, that's probably the the deal there. But if anybody gets hurt on the property while we're using it, we've agreed that we're responsible for that. I think as far as, I I agree, everybody wants to come to the table and and find a solution. I think the rub is that two thousand and three agreement that was entered into that John referenced. This specifically says. The bar, the bus garage to be built on the southwest portion of the property, to be leased to Vermillion Public Transit for the storage and maintenance of their bus fleet. The lessor will retain ownership of the garage and lease the garage to Vermillion Public Transit with the provision. That the Clay County Agricultural and Fair Board can utilize the facility during the Clay County Fair and one additional week of the year as an additional exhibit building. So I think that that is the rub there is that the agreement between the city and the county to even build the barn in the first place. Contemplated that and that's unfortunate, I hope that the state comes to the table as well. With the understanding where I don't know if they didn't have access to that document, but. And the lessor in Vermillion Public Transit will enter into a separate agreement in which. Vermillion Public Transit will be required to maintain the premises in a neat, tidy and sanitary manner, as well as assume all liability for the premises. So I I think that's the deal is. If we're asking though till Sunday at noon. We're looking to modify this as well. In the periscope senses. So that's where I would agree that we all wanna come to the table and find a reasonable solution, but I hope that the state is willing to deal on that as well because. In the periscope senses, the reason the building was built and there's documentation that effect in in the original contemplation of that was negotiating those terms. So hopefully we can come to some agreement, but as far as the liability. So hopefully we can come to some agreement, but as far as the liability during our use, I think it's pretty squarely on us. People can sue for any reason, but whether or not they'll prevail is another matter.
I have a question, in the original construction of the building, in the original construction of the building, was there state funds involved?
Yes.
Yes. Federal funds.
Eighty percent.
Federal to city or city, federal to state to city? In the, if that was the case, that in itself is somewhat an approval of the agreement, isn't it?
There's nothing in the, in the lea, in the contract between the city and the state that indicates anything about the fair using the building, and I think that's, that's the issue with this, the state. There's no documentation of it. Yes.
Well, I guess what I'd like to understand also is, well, and Dick, before we, before I jump ahead of you, I'm gonna let you go first.
Okay, I, I was just gonna point out, it, there is no place in that contract that mentions the additional time for what was the dog show, uh, that doesn't say that couldn't be attached to the front or the back of the fair week. That's, that would be at, uh, the discretion of the user of the building, wouldn't it? That, uh, uh, isn't that kind of the kicker here is that we're already covered as far as additional time other than during the fair itself? We could, uh, use that time that we've already reserved for the dog show, it had been at one point, for setup and tear down at the beginning and the end of fair week.
I think they want that week just for whatever might come up.
Sure.
Whenever.
Sure. But, oh, for year to year, what come up is, is, uh, set, setting up and tearing down the, the fair.
Yep. My only question would be since, and I guess it's, maybe the city is different, but if it was private property and somebody built a building, that all of a sudden becomes attached to that property and that property owner owns the building, so technically the city owns public transit building.
The fan's own eighty percent of it, gives them eighty percent of the money.
That's, that's, I'm, I'm talking, I guess, private, I don't know, maybe the city's different.
I don't think we provide insurance for it or anything.
No, no.
No, but I mean, when it comes to technical ownership, if it's an, an attached, an affixed, you know, object to property, it goes with the property. Just like on a rental house, if somebody put cupboards in, they're all of a sudden, you know, if the renter put cupboards in, the owner of the house owns those cupboards now, because it's affect, it's attached to the property. So technically the city owns, and I'm not a lawyer, sure you can argue it either way, but I know what private property would be like.
Well, in, yeah, it's, in that agreement, two thousand and three, when their building is titled the project equipment, bus barn, shall be in the name of the city. So I think that's the point you made.
Yes, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the state is saying they own the building.
They, they don't own like the building. It's not in the state name, but they put eighty percent of the, of the fund, so, uh.
Of the original construction?
Yeah, so, yes, so, and the addition of it.
Addition a hundred percent, actually.
Okay.
And, you know, like, uh, the local share, you know, when, uh, I have some numbers here, just let me make sure I, I'm giving it right. So, the city put kind of like fifty-eight thousand dollars and the federal share was two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for, for the bus barn, was a total of two hundred and ninety thousand, uh, expense, you know? Now, technically, you know, because of that, the state says this is a federal building, you know, we put the money into it, we pay for all the buses, we pay for all the equipment, eighty percent of it. Nothing should be signed and entered in agreement without their written approval, and it does this stuff.
But the agreement John has says that the city owns the building, so I don't know how the state can.
But in the same, in the same, in the same, uh, contract, you know, it does says that neither of us, city or Vermillion Public Transit can enter a contract with any other party without written approval from the state. And it also says that they can terminate that, the funds, you know, they can, um, terminate a project with or without cause, you know, if we move away from the purpose of that building at any time during the week. Also says that the city should contact the state right away if, if the building will be used in a matter substantially different from that described in the project, which is public transportation. So, when I read this, you know.
But does, does two weeks out of the year constitute?
It doesn't say in this agreement, nothing about it, and this is where we come from, you know? I, I read a agreement between the city and the Clay County, uh, and you're correct, it does say that, and it's for twenty-five years, uh, and the extra week and we're doing the Clay County, so I get that. But the state was not involved into it, they, they didn't give their written approval. This is the agreement of construction and, um, it's all the rules, says nothing about Clay County having access to that building at any time. It doesn't say anything about getting an extra week at any time during the year either, so in, in this contract in between the, the state, city and Vermillion Public Transit, nothing like this is mentioned, and what we're coming from is, if we get out of it, and we will, you know, um, based on this, we should have the state approval in writing that, that contract in between city and the Clay County is good to go, and we don't.
Have you been ordered in the last eighteen years?
Every year, twice a year.
So, how is it all of a sudden a problem?
Not, because in the past, we, we never had, it was there, but we were never asked to leave the barn. Recently we have been, so when we were asking to leave the barn, um, we start, we start looking, because you know what that means, you know, when you play with federal funds, when you work with federal funds, you know, you wanna make sure you follow all the rules. So, uh, this is about the three, four, five years probably before I started working for Sazak problem, and I know we tried to get to the bottom of it. Uh, and we're trying to have all the paperwork together, and that's, that's the piece we're missing, and the state is not going to, to agree to that.
So how?
That extra week.
So, may I, may I, so I, I think, um, you know, it's complicated, I get it, I think Alexis, uh, you know, kinda nailed it there. But I, I think we do all have an interest in making this work and that our energies would be well spent on figuring out a solution. Um, I don't think it's a stretch to find a solution, um, that we can all agree to. Um, and then, you know, transit can do what it needs to do to make it right with the state and, you know, and then we can just kind of all, all, all go, go on our, our, our way. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think this is a, a hard ask, um, you know, given that the, you know, a, all the transit district needs is a place to store buses while we use that, that building. Um, and I, I, you know, I think the possibility of, you know, making, I, I mean, essentially what's at risk is the project, right, the transit district as a project, and I would not want to lose that. Um, you know, that is an essential service to our residents. Um, so, so I, I propose that we just sort of focus on solutions and, you know, probably the beginning of that is, um, John figuring out what, you know, what your, um, capacity is for buses during that period of time, and then once we know that, we just have to figure out where the, where the other buses can, can be safe. Um, it, it, it just seems pretty, pretty simple.
Yeah, also, Rich is willing to let us what the, uh, Clay County, they're not willing and they're not looking forward to the extra week. The state is not looking forward to that and neither do we, as Vermillion Public Transit says that.
Yeah, so is.
Extra week.
Yeah, does the dog show happen still?
No.
Yeah, so that seems, that seems pretty, pretty simple.
But I'm gonna disagree that that's not a problem. The county would have never agreed to have the building built there if they didn't want the two weeks, that's what they asked for.
I think that's exactly where Dick is going with the concept of maybe we can tax some time on the front and back end, I mean, we're gonna, if we want any setup time, we're gonna have to give on some of that, and I get, I get where we're coming from, but, but then it's like, why, if it's not something we're utilizing and it's really important to them, then I think maybe we look at a give and take, because maybe it's cumbersome enough to, for them to move out of the building for a period of time, that if they're gonna do it, they do it once, but we cushion time on either side of that, because it's helpful for us for setup. To that end, it is helpful for us for setup, and I think that's a, that's something that's contemplating there in the week. So I think everybody, when it's time to negotiate this, comes to the table with, what is your bottom line? How important is it and what cannot give?
And what we have is two contracts that are in conflict, one is just between you and the state, the other is just between you and us. We have a contract that says, says that we have the use of that building for two weeks per year. We can shorten that to, to, uh, six days, for instance, is all we would be looking for, and, uh, the trick is to find someplace to park five buses and a few, uh, uh, some accessory equipment for that six days, and then move it out once, move it in once, and I think that's relatively simple, and, uh, you know, get to thinking about all the insurance things, like, yes, I would have to talk to my insurance agent about making my offer, but, uh, I wouldn't see a problem with that, I only always leave my backhoe upside when, during, during that, uh, that week. It's, uh, out, out a good share of the time anyway, so I could, I could accommodate a couple of buses, but, uh,
I was half joking, but okay, good.
Yes, yes, I don't mind, you know, that, that's with the, that's with the, that's with the proviso that, uh, that my insurance agent would go with that.
Yeah, so as the state for that, you know, uh, in that phone conference, they are kind of making us a favor, because they said we're making you a favor, letting you deal with the city and the Clay County and try to find a common ground. Because as far as they are concerned, they're ready to say no use at all.
So what happens then, you know?
Then they're going to say you don't have, uh, you don't get to use the, the barn during the Clay County at all. Nobody's going to use that building at all.
So I don't know that we quite have the authority to do that, what I'm saying is, what's the penalty to you guys?
We're gonna lose the funds.
Okay.
We're gonna lose public transit program.
So, that's their letter?
Yes, they said if we don't come to an agreement that the state wants it to, they, we can lose public transit funds.
And then the barn goes back to the city and that's.
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll lose all the funds.
Can we look into other areas of South Dakota? I cannot believe that in rural state of this, there is not some sort of shared agreement for facilities. This is, the overall that the state is taking is inconceivable to me, um, in this type of state. I'm sure that Huron facilities are used for other purposes other than the state fair. What about other county fairs? Buildings do not go unused in this state, and they rarely go unshared, and I am having trouble with this completely.
So I hear what you're saying, but also, you know, the state is having a problem with replacing the buses, paying for the, paying for any kinds of damage repairs, uh, and analyzing, every, everything like that, because they already paid eighty percent of everything, so if, uh, this would have not been a federal building, yes, you know, probably, uh, we, we are at their mercy, you know, so they are coming back and saying, hey, you know, we can agree on something, you know, and sign an agreement in between city, Vermillion Public Transit and Clay County and let you use it, but not to that extent. So that extra week is what is really essential to them.
So. Probably the difference, Phyllis, is, I'm just thinking on top of head, but mostly probably if you go like the here and where the state fair is, does the city of Hereon own that, that ground? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, city, state does, okay, so that's the, you know, I'm just saying that maybe that's where some of the difference comes in here. Because your vehicle's out there, when you buy a vehicle, the state pays eighty percent of it, and you hope the city kicks in some money. I hope the city kicks in some money, can I say that again?
So the, so you're.
That's a recent one.
Your, your, your yearly funding is state funds?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty percent.
So why do they keep throwing this federal in there?
Federal funds pass through the state.
Right.
Which becomes state funds then.
Yeah. Amendment administration.
Yeah.
It's federal transit administration rules, I mean, it's federal rules that we're dealing with here.
Right, so it actually starts out at the federal, they give the money to the state.
The state's recipient, we're the sub-receptioner of federal funds.
Yeah, it actually starts out federal, you're, you're, yeah, and then it moves on down the line. But see, that's, and so that's the problem you're running into is, they can call the shots, because, because they control the money. And that's, that's where you guys are coming in, that's, that's the bad part of it, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, yes.
I think we just gotta figure out a compromise here. Yeah, we just gotta figure out if it's, if it's, uh, uh, you know, like Dick said, we can add a couple of days on the start and on the back or something, I know that's not as great for you guys, but, but if you got a place to put the vehicles in, we just gotta work together, 'cause we gotta keep.
Well, we're here because we wanna work together.
Right, I know you do.
If we have let the state go the way they wanted to go, we'll not be here today, you know, they wanted to say no.
Right.
So we're here because we do wanna work, uh, with, with the city and with Clay County, but you have to, you have to understand where we're coming from too, you know, uh.
Can I get the contact information for who you're dealing with?
Yes, uh, Rich letters.
Can you send it to Carrie and then Carrie can send it, email it to me?
Because what, what, it sounds to me like the insurance part is taken care of, somebody gets hurt there, we're fine.
Yep.
You know, I, that's.
The state may need to see that.
Yes, 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 I agree, but that's thing, that problem's taken care of. I think we got the problem, we'll figure out this vehicle deal, where to put them, we can put them in the co, in the, out there at the compound and if, and, and then maybe we can figure out some where to put the extra ones inside. So I think that we can maybe work that out. So then it just comes down to the time period that the county want, the county fair board wants it in the city, or in Sazak agrees to, in the city. I think we can figure out something here, and if we get something into place here, then it can kind of go on for, and we can walk away from this and we're done with this problem, you know?
Probably would need to do amendments.
Yes, I, yes, yes.
Ten years from now.
Yes.
Yeah, the city has two, two agreements here, and they're in conflict.
Right.
And it's up to, you know, us to, to help you, uh, maybe resolve that conflict.
So, so you've been looking into this for five years?
I have not been there for five years, no, I've been looking for at least three years that I am aware of it, uh, I have not been in Sazak only for, I have been in Sazak for four years. Um, and I know the executive director that was at that time when I started, uh.
Nick?
No.
Correct, or Jerry?
Jerry, we looked into that at that time, um, unfortunately Jerry left, and then we got a new ED, and then we all start all over again, and then the pandemic, pandemic kicked in, and here we are again, because we are missing that piece, you know, and if I am correct, and pardon me if I'm wrong, I think in two thousand and seventeen was the first time we looked into this, because I think it was the first time it came up. As far as I'm aware, uh, being president of Sazak.
Was it eighteen?
No, because Jerry left in seventeen, so, at the end of the, at the end. No, because Jerry left in seventeen, so, at the end of the, at the end of the year, so. But I know that I was working with Jerry trying to get everything together. You know, we're going to come and have the conversation with you. He did not agree with it either, you know, we're just trying to put all the pieces together. Because it is a huge liability for us, it is. And we were missing that written agreement from the state. And we wanted to have everything in order, you know? We did all the signatures, written approval of everything and we're missing that piece. So then Nick came over, we started looking into it, pull more information together, pandemic hit, Nick left, here I am, trying to pull all the pieces together, making the phone calls to the state, the state has been involved for a while. But, you know, it's a lot of turnover, probably, you know, the city too, at SISAC definitely, you know? And we don't have all the documents that we need to have. So that's where we're coming from, that's how it all started. So we don't feel great about, you know, that extra week. Because we don't know when you guys are gonna come and say, hey, we need a barn. It's, it's winter, the buses cannot start, you know, they hear, what's gonna happen? It's, so the state doesn't want that either, you know? And we don't, we don't either. But we are going to agree for that Clay County Tuesday to Sunday. So if you don't use it, you know, I mean, it's like, it's just because something might happen in, in the future that you might need it. Because the state is very hung up on this extra week.
That was the whole point to begin with. And I think they were hung up too because, and I'm not sure when the softball fields were built. But if you ask the fair board, they keep getting ground taken away from them without their, I mean, they have no say over it. And I don't think there was an amendment when, on the rental agreement for the softball fields. Because technically this, the county should, should still be able to be using those softball fields for whatever they want. Which I don't think anybody wants to see a softball fields tore up just for whatever. But I mean, the ground just keeps getting taken without an amendment to the agreement. And that's where the fair board's gonna come from.
Yeah, so I, I have one other question, which is where school buses are kept and if there might be some space there as well?
They're parked outside north of JFI. Because they're the ones that are in charge of school bus transportation.
They don't own them anymore. They hired Jeff DFI.
Oh, okay.
Jeff Van. Hired the drivers a little bit.
And I don't know, what was the school, what was the school bus barn before that?
I thought it was, the school bus barn was the building right beside you guys.
Coloredly fall?
Yeah.
Okay. Overhauled.
That was the school bus barn for a long time. Well, I guess right now we're kind of in a standstill here until we figure out exactly what everybody wants. So I think that, can we just table this right now? I know that's not your answer, but in each party come back and with what they want. And then we, and that's where we had to.
And more importantly, what we can offer.
Right, exactly.
And I think we should ask the fair board, we need to talk to them.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. They need to have some input in here to what they, they want. And then maybe we can come to, hopefully we can come to an agreement, a compromise for both sides. And that way it gives John some time to figure out if we gotta put an amendment to it and what we gotta do. And then that way we can get something written to the state. Like Lexi said, the insurance, state, we can show the insurance, that we have insurance for that week and get all the problems worked out. So I guess I moved to table it for now.
Second.
And get you another.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Your volume must be down.
I have no idea how to change that.
Oh, there you're fine now.
Very good.
Now it's good.
I can hear you.
It slept, I guess, went to sleep.
Was that a, a yes then, Phyllis?
Yes, that was a yes.
And Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get it worked out.
Yes, what do you guys need, like, what's your timeline?
Well, the state wants to move as soon as possible, so they didn't really give us a timeline. We did tell them that we're going to meet with you today and see what, what we're doing.
Fair board.
So, yeah.
Uh, next Thursday.
Okay. So, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the fair board meets on Thursday.
First Thursday of the month.
So you can bring that up then and see what they want. We just gotta find a middle.
Well, I know what they're gonna want.
I know what they're gonna want too, but, but somewhere along, everything's gotta get.
We can't lose public transit.
No, that's just.
No, but the building wouldn't have been built there.
But, but we gotta pass that.
Right.
And when I say that.
How do you get past some, it's, it's easy when it, when you don't use it. Because I don't use public transit, so I'm sitting there going, you know, I, I'm not doing that, but it's easy to do it. Because I'm just like, well, it's public transit, I don't use it. But the fair board keeps losing ground without anybody ever asking. Or the, and I should say the county, because the county lets the fair board use it. But they've, they've put up the cell tower in the middle, softball fields. I mean, there's no room for a carnival anymore because of that.
It's true, but what I was gonna say is, what they've also gained potentially is some extra days on the front end and the back end of this thing that they aren't entitled to by that contract. We wanna get into the written letter of the law, John is absolutely correct on that.
They get to use it the week of the fair.
No, that is not what it says. It says during the Clay County Fair.
Which starts Monday, open to the public is three days. Fair starts Monday and Sunday.
Okay.
I mean, just because it's, just because it's only open to the public for three days doesn't make that the fair. I mean, there's setup and there's teardown with anything.
And I, and I think even during the published part, it talks about, uh, there's, there's time for, I think during the public, publicized schedule, there's something about setup on the, on the start of the fair. I don't know about the end, I, I think the official end is Sunday anyway, isn't it?
Right, that's cleanup day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, this is so worth negotiating. I mean, I know you haven't used public transportation, but Mr. Smith Bakery Cafe would not be here if there weren't public transit. Because that's how Larry got to the bakery and back every day. Um, because he could no longer drive or walk that far. So I, you know, I think of this as an essential service. I agree with you, Travis, that, you know, the history is, is really difficult, right? I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't seem it ought to be this way, but this is where we are. And I, you know, I think we're gonna have to give a little.
I know, but we gave a little to begin with to have the barn built there and only asked for two weeks. The barn should have been built somewhere else.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I, I don't think that is gonna help us resolve this problem.
There is another issue in here of those, of the Sunday, the Monday, Tuesday, is there is a great deal of traffic that comes into the fair, all of the trucks and the animals, et cetera, of which that's going to be a big liability if the transit vehicles are on site. They're asking for accidents to happen. So it's, it's more important to keep those days clear of the transit buses for their protection.
And the, and the street is closed on Monday.
Right, and so if they're there, it won't be able to close, they'll have to go in and out and in and out. So it's a, it's a point of protection of their buses to have them out of there.
I mean, I'm not wanting to get rid of public transit and risk the funds either, I'm just.
No, I don't either.
It should have been built somewhere else, but that was the give and take eighteen years ago. They said, fine, build it here, we're okay with that. But we get it two weeks out of the year.
Well, it was for com- common benefit of both the fair and in public transit. So that I don't see a conflict.
But I don't understand how it's, they've been audited twice a year for the last eighteen years and it's never been a problem. And also they started looking into it in 2017 and we just re-signed the agreement in 2019.
Why are we just here about it? Problem is, is because 2017, they were in, Jerry was leaving. Jerry left. They were, there was a period of time there, they had no, no director, they had an interim director. Then Nick came on board and Nick left. And now, now we're back, they're back to another forward director. And that's why everything, it got dropped, I guess is what I'm saying is, it started out that they were looking into it and then it got dropped.
Well, according to Missy, because one of our fair board members was like best friends with Nick. And they were getting conflicting. What's happening today is conflicting from what Nick was telling them.
Well, I'm not gonna get into conflict of things out there because I'm not, that, there's a whole lot there that, that I'm not getting into on that one. But, you know, and, but, yeah. I will tell you that Yumala is a person that is a very detailed person. And if she read something into that, if she read it, she wants everything in a line. Because, and she's right, she gets audited twice a year because she was the finance person out there. And she moved up to the director now. And she's, I would never want to get in an argument with, with her. Because when, because when she comes with her stuff, she's got it. She's done enough research that she's, it'd be hard to say she's ever wrong. She, she would not argue with you if she didn't think that she had everything in a row. And, and she will, she will let you talk to her, you know, to, to make suggestions and change. But she's usually got her stuff in a row. And so I'm sure what she did was somewhere along the line that she talked, because they knew they'd been talking about it. She took over, she wanted all this stuff straightened out. And so she probably did found out from the state what it was all about, went back and researched contract, seen that, that that was in there. Then called somebody at the state to find out some information. That's my guess. I mean, I'm totally guessing here, but that's the way she operates, you know? So I'm thinking that's how it came up a little stronger. So I, that's.
Drew.
Yep, County welfare case, uh, this is the Avera one we talked about maybe two weeks ago. We've been working on it almost a year now and finally came to a settlement with Avera's council. To authorize the amount requested for seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Can you tell us the original?
The original amount requested was three hundred thousand. Ish.
I, I will move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Drew? Oh, ditch board, take motion.
I'll move to go to ditch board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in ditch board. Lexi, ditch board authority.
Well, I guess that's where I'm struggling, guys. I can't find any. And I don't know really what to say to that. Because the only things I find about, I mean, if you search for a term ditch board in statute, I'm not finding anything for that.
You gotta, you gotta look under watershed district.
And so where I was gonna go with that is if I look into those types of things, this specifically gets us back into any, any authority we have here, I think, falls under managing water flow. And you know how I feel about that. And, you know, when you look in watershed districts and, and things of that nature, I need to pull that authority back up. I mean, my question to you is, are we, have we ever really given up the business then of having a water, water board, if you will? Yeah, drainage board in that regard. Because that's to me where the authority to regulate water comes from, is a drainage board. We specifically got out of that business and I struggled. I looked in the commissioner handbook for anything about this, could it be termed something different? I haven't found anything in that regard. So what are our primary functions as a ditch board? What do we do? And where do we get the authority to do that?
So at the annual meeting, they tell us what they want done and where to set their tax levy.
Who?
The members.
Of the watershed district?
Yes, everybody who pays tax into that watershed district. So we just got done with our annual meeting here three weeks ago. And they vote on how they want to be taxed, the amount, percentage wise, I should say. And then they tell us what projects they want done. And then we, and then during the year they'll come in and say, well, this culvert's broke or we need to spend money to fix this.
So we should be tiling this watershed district?
Do we have any authority for, I mean, creating, have we ever created this? I mean, the, it, it seems to me the, the problem is that we've got no paperwork because it's such an old organization. And so, you know, we have no authority, um, you know, to be doing all this unless there is an ordinance somewhere in a statute that enables us to do that. So if the statutory language says you've gotta be a drainage board, I mean, we can't correct what's passed, but it would make some sense to, uh, you know, create for the future, um, you know, a, a, a ordinance structure, right? That allows us, under existing state statute, to operate. And I know this is for RAG, this is like a FEMA reimbursement for us, it's a FEMA reimbursement problem. And that probably isn't gonna go away because we don't have what they're asking for.
So we, I mean, it's, it has to be somewhere. Because it's gonna be in the fifties. It's, Dick, do you remember when they went?
It'd have been in the fifties.
Went to the senate?
Well.
They were gonna straighten the Vermillion River with federal funds. And they got federal funds for this watershed, for Clay Creek at the same time.
Dykes and dam building and that sort of stuff is done through the TLC. Did, did you follow up on TLC where they got their funding, their authority from? TLC Vermillion, Turner, Laken, Clay, uh, project district? And why that is there is to perform projects like that. They, they tax, they tax landowners and that are within the district and use that tax money to perform individual projects. Like the, like the Clay Union Ditch and the Clay Creek Ditch. It's outside of that area, as I understand. But like Brad's, uh, I think our authority would follow that of Brad's in the TLC project district. That's not a water development district like Vermillion Basin District, that's a, that's entirely different authority.
Somewhere there's a vote. Because they had, the way it was explained to me by the people who live out there was there comes a point where you have to have people pass away for things to pass. And that's how they finally, the people against it, finally, the, the number of them got lesser and lesser versus the people who wanted it. So there was a vote somewhere.
So.
To form, to form that.
It could be, you know, it, it could also be just a private association, right? I mean.
If it was, we wouldn't be involved.
Right, but where, where, I mean, I think the problem Alexa's having and that we're all having is where is that authority?
I, I can't give the state what they need for our FEMA funds because I can't draft a letter identifying this.
Carrie, you be able to find when they started collecting those funds? Be like nineteen fifty-six.
Yeah, news, they've always, I mean, they love a clear back in the early nineteen hundreds when they formed it.
For the creek, but the laterals.
I can look back in minutes and see what I can find.
Here comes our mentor, Leo.
Leo.
I can't tell you about the laterals, but I can tell you about the Clay Creek, the Clay, Clay Ditch and the Clay Yankton Ditch. And if you go back, there's, there's minutes to go all the way back to nineteen oh five, I, I've read those.
Yep. Yep.
And it was organized and they were assessed then as how much, so it goes back to then. So it's not, I don't know where nineteen fifty-six came from.
Well, and it does, Leo's right, it does. And it references a petition, but what I can't find is the original petition. And I think that's what FEMA wants, is something that shows where it started exactly.
You, that's, you've gone in the minutes and you don't find that?
Yeah, I've gone in the minutes and it references that there was a petition from the landowners, but then I can't find the original petition.
Yeah, it mentions the, the attorney and, and everything else, you know, the, you know, where the money came from, the whole works and how each one of them was, had to pay so much.
Yeah, it does, but it, you know, like I tried to look through even our old just paper files and I couldn't find any petitions in there either.
Then another thing is the auditor's always kept minutes for all of our ditch board annual meetings, so if we go back to the original, have you done that?
Yeah, I mean, these are the original.
Whoops, these are the original ditch minutes that I was looking at, like for Clay Creek and Yankton Clay and, yep.
From nineteen oh five?
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, and it does say, you know, it does say that there was a petition from the landowners and then it lays out like the acres and all of that, but I don't have any original petition.
Is there anything before nineteen oh five though? Because nineteen oh five would have been construction, so they would have had to come up with something.
I don't remember exactly what year it started.
When I went back to it, it actually started in nineteen oh four, but. Well, Dick, you're a little bit of an authority on this too.
Barely, but.
He understands where the water goes, how it, how it becomes.
The first, first law is water flows downhill. If there's no downhill, the water won't flow. Unless you pop it.
Yeah, six years of school to know that, right?
Yeah, that's right, seven, yeah.
Seven.
Uh.
But we'll have to.
But. Yeah, it seems to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lane.
Lane.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm just going to take this time as we're talking about what authority that we need. Amanda Vander Plaats is on, she's from the State Emergency Management. And do, and has been dealing with Rod for this issue, so Amanda, I hate to throw you in the spot, but um, I know Carrie's turned, um, there she is, I know Carrie's turned documents into you, could you explain what more you need and what? If that might help Alexis, who's the state's attorney and all that, figure out what's going on too.
Yeah, so, hi, everybody. Um, and I just sent Lane and Carrie the latest that OCC from FEMA's Denver Regional Office sent me. They're pretty explicit in what they want. And it doesn't have to be from a hundred years ago. It can be from now that the county attorney writes something up explaining the role of the ditch board, the legal authority regarding the county versus the ditch board and who's who. And something that says, you know, why there was never an ordinance established, why there was never anything put in writing. I mean, because you guys stand to lose out on a substantial amount of federal funding if we can't get something in writing sent to FEMA establishing the legal authority for the county.
What would we need an ordinance for? What would that, what would that help?
No, I didn't say you needed an ordinance, I said something from the attorney needs to be written up saying why nothing was established over a hundred years ago. I mean, we, you and I understand that back then it was a handshake agreement, you know? But legally, in order for you guys to get federal funding, FEMA needs something that establishes the legal authority of the county versus the ditch board and explains whether or not the two are one in the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so I, I want to make sure I understand it. So Alexis could take the research that Carrie Crem, our auditor, has done on the history and explain that this is the way it's been for over a hundred years. And, and that, that, you know, Clay County does the administration. And it is, it, the, the ditch board serves as a, as a, the, the taxing entity. And, and then that would be enough for you.
So, and it's not me. And if it were up to me, this thing would have been taken care of a long time ago. They just gave me eighty million dollars, everybody would have been paid two years ago and we wouldn't be dealing with this. So Chris Americanos is the attorney in Denver for FEMA. And this is quoting, and I sent, like I said, I sent this to Lane and Carrie, but so you guys are all on the same page. FEMA needs something to be written up by an attorney that establishes the roles and responsibilities for both the county and the ditch board. Since there is no original ordinance establishing this, the best that we can do is get legal explanation of how the board was established with an explanation of how each entity operates. It would be helpful to include a legal explanation justifying why no ordinance was ever established. So that's straight from FEMA's attorney in Denver, what they want.
But how can she explain how it was established? I mean, there's nothing out there to show that how it was established.
The minutes.
Yeah, I know, but the minutes just don't tell how it was established, I guess there's.
Says there was a petition.
Petition, but there's nothing to show the petition, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, but, but, but we do know how it operates, we do know.
Yes.
Who does what. We do, we do know the roles and the responsibilities of each entity. And we do know why there's no ordinance. So it seems like if that's all you need, we, we, we ought to, we ought to make an effort to provide that. And, and I, I know that, you know, Alexis will use her best judgment about what can be said is true and and, 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 and see, see if that works. I mean, what, Amanda, what you've described seems to me, we, we know, we know those things.
But the last, the legal, the legal, how it, yeah, we don't have that.
Right, but I think what we can say is at the time that this arrangement was established, you know, it was informal and it's continued to be informal until the present. And, you know, I, I mean, Amanda's saying that, that, that FEMA will accept that. And I, I think we ought to, I think we ought to give it a shot, it's a lot of money at stake.
Well, the, I think the key here is that, that we have long established and practiced taxing authority.
Exactly.
By that group of landowners on themselves, administered by us as ditch board. I think that's the key here that should make a difference to the folks out in region eight or where, whoever it is out in Denver. That would seem to me be the, the key to establish the legitimacy of this thing. We wouldn't spend all this money over a hundred years, a hundred and fifteen years or so. But without that, Leo's got a, another question here.
It was, there was an authority that came from the federal government.
Well, it's, it should, it's set up as a watershed district. Now, whether it got filed, I mean, it was set up as a watershed district long before, I think, state law even.
Exactly.
Come in.
Well, there was no such thing as watershed districts at the time.
They were a taxing district, I mean, I guess they would, they would have fold, folded into a watershed district now, but my other question, Amanda, and I, I don't want to ask it, but I'm going to. Are they eligible for federal money when this is private tax dollars and not public tax dollars? That may.
That's why you need to establish the legal responsibility. Because the Public Assistance Grant Program is not available to private citizens. It's only available to governmental entities and certain private nonprofits. So that's part of why you have to establish who has the legal responsibility. Because if it's a county, then that's a governmental entity and you guys are eligible for PA program funding. But if the county doesn't have responsibility and it's private citizens who've just banded together to form their own ditch board, then they're not eligible for public assistance funding. So.
It's a tax, which is a public, a public, but taxed on private citizens. Well, my property taxes on me is a private citizen.
But what, like I said, what we need to establish is the legal authority. And if you guys are operating under the same tax ID, so you're operating under the county's EIN for any funds that you guys have to turn in like tax documentation for, anything like that, then that would help establish the legal responsibility of the county because you're operating under the same EIN that the county does. Anything that says ditch board or watershed district or anything like that, if it operates under that EIN, then you can use that to help establish the county's legal responsibility.
Okay, Carrie, do we get audited on the ditch board then, when we get audited every other year?
So, um, when we get audited, they look at the ditches as a special assessment fund. And so, I mean, they do look at them, they don't obviously go into as great a detail as they do with the general fund and the highway fund and such, but they look at it as a special assessment fund and it does appear under the county budget.
I think that's key here.
And this.
Word assessment.
Yeah. This will trigger an OIG audit because the dollar amount that we're looking at here is greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding because of the one project that you guys have. So anytime an entity receives more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding in a single federal fiscal year, it will trigger an OIG audit. So that's part of the reason why we really need to cross our Ts and dot our Is on this and make sure that we have established without any doubt who is legally responsible for these ditches and for the funding of these projects and the maintenance of these ditches.
My understanding is the county is not responsible for it. We're the stewards of the money.
We're responsible in doing all of the contracting, collecting the money.
At the, at the direction of the members.
And that's where my concern comes in. Because everything in statute, the power to make these decisions vests squarely in that watershed district with the managers of the district. Now, they can combine with each other, and I'm thinking to myself, all right, one or more districts can combine, is that what we're doing here? I, I mean, I think somewhat in a practical sense, but when we come back to it, what I'm hearing from you guys is the only thing that you're combining on is to tax it. And I can't find authority that says that. So here's contracts between district and others. The managers may enter into contracts or other arrangements with any agency of the United States government, with persons, railroads, or other corporations, with public and municipal corporations and state government of this state. Or with drainage, soil and water conservation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I see nothing about counties, talks about states. Operating in the works of the districts, the waters of the districts, or to minimize or prevent damage to the properties, works, and improvements of the districts from soil erosion. Or for making surveys and investigations or reports on the surveys and investigations. However, no contract or agreement for purposes of implementing the general plan of improvements that will require the levy of increased taxes or assessments may be signed by the managers without submitting the increased taxes or assessment to the eligible voters, the watershed district for approval. I mean, throughout this entire situation here, I can't even find something that would, you know, we by, by ordinance have designated you as the county commission board to sit as the board of adjustments for planning and zoning matters. I mean, could, could we be saying that you're sitting as, the ditch board is sitting as the manager of this district? No, because by petition, they need to each as a district file their petition duties of supervisors on receipt of initiating petition. And their initiating petition for each watershed district should be filed with the secretary of state. I mean, it's each individual district's obligation on these things. And the only other thing that I can find is, it was, okay. Resolution as to payment of cost by general tax levy, special assessment or improvement bonds, is that, is that what we're doing here? The managers shall carefully examine the plans and holdings and hold hearings on the proposals of the plans. By resolution, the manager shall, shall resolve whether proposed work or any part of proposed work should be accomplished. And whether its costs shall be paid by a general tax levy against all taxable landowners' land and buildings associated with the district. Or by special assessment of the landowners' land and buildings within the district to be spec, specifically benefited by the project. Or by both general tax levy and special assessment, and the portion be paid each. I mean, that's what I'm hearing is what we're doing.
But isn't what Dick said earlier that we basically set up a watershed district before there were watershed districts enabled by statute?
So can I just jump in here? Alexis, I don't know if you got a chance to review that, the photocopies of that book that I sent out a few weeks ago, but Troy Wallerabram brought in a bunch of information and in that it seemed to, you know, specifically give the commissioners authority for this kind of thing, but the numbers in the book were not South Dakota codified law numbers and I couldn't, I couldn't quite place them where they came from. I don't know what book they came out of. But it was like, you know, the, the title at the top of the page was something about water and then it had these numbers. And it pretty clearly said that it gave the commissioners this responsibility. So I just, I couldn't find, you know, where that book came from, whether it was like a, some sort of administrative rule or whether it was a federal thing, I couldn't quite find that.
But that was on the laterals, wasn't it? Or was it on the ditch?
I think he had that for lateral fifty, but they were all set up at the same time.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And that would have been.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it wasn't specific to the laterals.
So what would this have been? Do you, do you know?
I, I can find it and resend it to you.
Okay, that'd be great. I guess my point is, is everything I find, I, I don't feel comfortable signing my name to something identifying that you all have the legal authority to, to do what we're doing. Because when I review the legal authority for things and, and, and then I'm going to have to go back and if that's the case, then we're going to be looking at asking to be grandfathered into something. And it, and my, my question is, can we do that? Or when the statutes are updated and watershed districts are established and the rules and guidelines and all of those things setting forth what needs to happen now is going on. I mean, is this really on the managers? The manager shall also determine in resolution whether to issue improvement bonds in the district or authorize other arrangements to provide for the payments of the cost of the project by installments instead of levying the entire tax or special assessment at one time. The manager shall prepare, prepare a description of each tract of land to be benefited. Which document should be on file in the district office and available for inspection during regular business hours.
But, you know, I, I have a feeling though that, that what Amanda is, and Amanda, you correct me if I'm wrong, that what Amanda is saying is that FEMA is willing to accept a common law explanation as opposed to a statutory law explanation. Is, is that?
Yeah, they, they understand that you don't have anything currently in statute that sets up the county's legal authority for this. They completely understand that. But what they're looking at is some kind of legal explanation currently that would give the county this authority. Because otherwise, I mean, I'm just writing the numbers here, you're looking at missing out on over a million dollars in state and federal funding between these three projects.
So what do other counties do?
So, so what other counties do, and I, I asked a lot about this when I was at the commission, commissioner training session. And what other counties do is they hire a specialist in this kind of law who goes back and looks at what's there. And, you know, for ten thousand dollars writes a letter that explains kind of the common law history of the entity. And, you know, that, and it includes things like we use the same EIN. You know, it's the county commission that votes and so on. So once you put in roles and responsibilities and the history and the minutes. once you put in roles and responsibilities and the history and the minutes, um, you know, they're not asking you to say, oh yes, the commission is legally authorized to do this. What they're asking you, I think, to say is that um, this is the history. This is how we got to where we are today. Um, this is what the county's responsible for. This is what the ditch board's responsible for. Um, here's how it works. Um, and, uh, you know, then they, they seem, they seem to be, be willing to accept that. I mean, even the fact that the auditors treat ditches as a special assessment fund um, allows us to say, see, even the auditors say it's a special assessment fund. Um, and that is what it looks like. And then going forward, I think we can simplify all of this um, by actually creating an ordinance going forward that specifies, um, you know, the status of the various organizations. But, um, you know, I, I, this is like, we could think of this as the million dollar letter.
And I did forward that email back out to you, Lexi.
Can, can I say something, Amanda? This is Rod, highway superintendent. You just mentioned that we have a chance of losing over a million dollars. Are you talking the whole countywide or just for this project? Because?
There's three projects, Rod, that are included in the determination memo that, um, Denver's OCC office is writing. Um, there's the Clay Creek Ditch Site twenty-six, which is a million dollar project right now. There's the Clay County Levy Damage Site twenty-three, which is a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar project. And then there's your culvert site twenty-four and twenty-five, which is a twelve thousand dollar project.
Cause this is, this is the first time I've heard those numbers. Um, I've never gotten any reply back because those projects are still pending due to this problem with, you know, lack of minutes, whatever. But, um. Yeah.
Never, never gotten a reply from home.
Um, the numbers, I, that's the first time I've heard that amount because that's quite a bit. Ten times the amount of what I turned in for the estimate damage. Um, who come up with those numbers, if I can ask?
The, uh, FEMA's Consolidated Resource Center down in Texas is who does the estimates on those. And that's just estimates right now.
Yeah, okay. But that, that just, um, I have not heard that number ever before. You just about knocked me out of my chair when you said that.
Right.
Sorry.
So the culverts would be probably on one of the laterals.
The culverts were on two different laterals.
Yep, and then the dyke was on.
The dyke and the cleanout are the Clay Creek.
Yep.
But there are two different projects because.
Three different.
Two, uh, I mean, the Clay Creek, I had to have two different site numbers.
Okay.
But okay, thank you, Amanda.
So can we use, so when we have our annual meeting? The members vote on a, on a board. They vote for chairman and vice chairman. Does that, is that setting any legal precedent for authority then? So does it? So it's not just, so the commissioners go as, as the board, I guess, and then the, the actual body, the members nominate a chairman and a vice chairman and then vote on it. So is that give, do we need to put that in there too? Is that giving legal authority for that body?
So is it a commission meeting or is it a ditch board meeting?
It's a ditch board meeting that has authority over the spending of these, of these assessed dollars.
So I think some, maybe something that muddies it a bit is the fact that members of the commission are also members of the ditch board serving in a dual role. Is that? Am I?
It wouldn't be a dual role. We're, cause, cause I'm chairman of the commission, I wouldn't necessarily have to be chairman of the ditch board.
But you're on the ditch board.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and see, and I think that's part of the reason why legal authority needs to be established because it is a little murky as to whether or not the ditch board is a separate entity. Or whether or not the ditch board is a county entity.
Okay, but there's another way of thinking about this that I, I think might be helpful. Um, and that is thinking about that annual meeting of the ditch board as an advisory group. Because in the last analysis, it is the commission sitting as the ditch board that makes the decisions about how money is gonna be spent. So the ultimate legal authority to spend money and you know, to tax is ours. Although they serve, but they serve as an advisory group that basically tells us how much money to collect and what to do with the money. So it seems to me that the ultimate authority um, is always with, um, the county.
They vote.
Right, they vote.
On how much to assess.
Right, but then we do the assessment.
Could the county go against?
We collect the money.
What's that, Amanda?
Could the county go against what they vote? Like, could the county supersede what they?
No, we can't.
If they want to assess ten percent, they assess ten percent. We can't say, no, it's only gonna be five.
Yeah, we are stewards of the money.
Yes.
We can't spend it without their authority.
So I'm looking at what Carrie just sent me of the sixty-one point one zero one five. And thank you, Carrie, that is very helpful. What it looks like to me in tracing back is these are gonna be laws. I mean, that's how South Dakota codified law is going to have been numbered and identified back in like nineteen nineteen, nineteen thirty-nine, those types of things. So that specific reference was the old version of what in nineteen eighty-five became SDCL forty-six A eleven fourteen. Actually, it might have been earlier than that. But anyway, the point being those, I mean, this, this does, this is potentially a starting spot. I think what we continue to talk about here though is, is the stuff that continues to give me heartburn. Which is, okay, even if I can come up with something that says we can infer based upon the practice and the laws at the time back in the nineteen you know, nineteen, nineteen thirties that this is how this became established. Today's law indicates a different practice, and I think the fact that we're having a little bit difficulty identifying. So back in the day, you guys were the ones that made those decisions. That's why you have the ability to tax. It's why that, you know, the landowners are gonna come and petition to you all, not the watershed district board and the managers and all those folks. And since they're the one making the decisions. They're the ones that establish the petition, identify their roles. The, the landowners have to dispute anything to them. And by you guys sitting in this capacity, it's really kind of interjecting a cog into that process that doesn't need to be there. So even if I come up with something that identifies how we started and got to the situation that we're in. It's gonna be relying on old law. And I'm, it, really old law, and I want something in writing from someone else telling me how it's actually operating. So I can copy and paste that into a letter. Cause I don't go to the dis- ditch, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't participate in this in any fashion. So I want somebody else who sits in that role to, and put in writing to me how you guys operate and what you do.
Okay.
And, um.
Dick, would you?
That, uh, what you just translated from that earlier law into the SDCL, that would be helpful as well because when I sent that documentation to Denver, they, uh, were like, gee, thanks, but it's not SDCL, so it doesn't really help your case. So when you write something up, if you could do that translation into SDCL, that would be helpful too. Um, and I just do wanna caution you guys. Once FEMA formally issues the determination memo, you will only have sixty days to issue your written appeal of their determination. And that sixty days starts from when that DM is formally issued by Denver, and they have not formally issued it yet. Uh, but it is coming. It's just going through their office of general counsel.
Yeah, I mean, w- one possibility would be to hire, um, a lawyer who specializes in these things. There is somebody just over the border in Minnesota that other counties have used. So, I, I mean, that would be it would be expensive, um, but not as expensive as losing a million dollars.
Leo's his last name, bro?
You know?
Rinky Noonan.
I'll find it.
So, what did you?
Rod, what were you thinking that was gonna cost to do this project? That's what I want.
Right?
I don't.
A little better off to just.
Okay.
Let them blow ball determination.
Go eyeball, yeah. I'm just curious, I mean, you know, what the difference is there? Amanda won't tell. Um. Yeah. I do have the copy of the letter of my pickup that, that was, where Prairie Center ditch. Should have brought it in today. I shouldn't, didn't bring it in. But.
Troy dropped those papers off at my office. Um, that I forward to Carrie and it's specifically mentions in there lateral fifty, lateral fifty-eight, and lateral fifty B, where they petition the commissioners. I don't know if authority is the right word. But it, but that just was for lateral fifty. Now, I couldn't figure out what those laws were. I didn't realize that they changed them. But I would think there's some kind of a paper out there that um. I guess Frank Orr always seemed to have all the paper. I don't know if Justin would.
He has it. He's gonna bring it in. I don't think he has yet, right?
Oh yeah, I have a book in my office from Justin.
Okay. So we're gonna have to go through this again, my man, then try and, try and get it figured out.
Yeah.
We'll probably be in contact.
Yeah, anytime you guys have questions, just let me know. Um, and I can always relay that through to Denver. Um, and call up the lawyer that FEMA has down there and just make sure that what you guys are thinking is gonna fly with them. Um, because this will set legal precedent for anything going forward for future disasters as well. Um, because if these sites are deemed ineligible for this disaster, then when they do an eligibility review for future disasters, if these sites are damaged again, then this will come up.
Okay.
You play good throws.
Leo?
Yeah, Carrie, uh, are there detailed minutes, uh, of the Clay Yankton or the, yeah, the Clay Yankton ditch format? It seems like there were, are, are they as detailed as, as the Clay Creek ditch?
Yeah.
We have, you know, the, don't, it won't call them blueprints because they were brown prints of, you know, that went clear across the commissioner's room of, of length of the whole layout of that. And I swear that there is, there's gotta be something, I know there's something there at the very beginning. As I read through the, the Clay Creek ditch board meeting minutes up until it got to where I guess where it was in, uh. It seems to me like the answer is there because it started with the federal government. But it's been several years since I've read that.
And you said that's in the minutes, Leo?
Yeah, there's separate set minutes. Carrie's got them in her office in the vault.
Okay.
And it, it's nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five, somewhere in there.
That, that's got drawings of the ditch too?
There's an old drawing, you know where that's at, Carrie, that?
There's a, uh, we have old, old, yeah, drawings, maps, whatever that are just rolled up.
That'll likely tell us where the easement with changes.
Oh yeah, let me see, that's another thing. When I was setting things up, uh, for my replacement. I thought I, did I leave anything in the drawer for you?
Oh, let's see. The only thing I saw was the, um. Your drawer?
Nope.
Nope, yep, there's stuff here. What do you?
Well, it seems to me like I left you something off, on, on Clay Creek, or on the Clay Yankton ditch. And I just threw away, just the other, just recently, I just threw away the, the laws on drainage and whatever that I had at home. I had a heck of a pile and I couldn't remember what all I left you, but I really, no.
All right, I didn't.
That isn't by right.
Doesn't help. I'll go through it, see if I can find anything.
I just know that the key is back, going back to the archives and following it through. There, there has to be legal authority where the.
Yeah, if we've got those easily accessed, hopefully on a rainy day, I'll get in here and start reading. A rainy, I know.
It's gonna rain.
How much though?
Enough.
Okay. Are we all confused now?
Completely.
Nobody knows what we're doing. Just we're all on the same page, confused equally. Um, we're gonna have to do some more research.
Can I ask man, Amanda, one more question?
Only if it's helpful.
Can you, Amanda, this is Rod again. Can you send me the email or with the list of those price estimates? So I just have them for my file or?
Yeah.
Is that on a table?
It's all out in Grant's portal. Have you been out there?
Yeah, and every time I try to go into those, it won't let me in. It won't give me a review button because they're on hold due depending circumstances. So I can't get any information for each one of those sites. Unless I'm doing, I even, my last PDMG walked me through there, but he told me that I couldn't get into them because they weren't open to me. So is he telling, I, I have a new guy now, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know. God bless them. Some of those. I don't, I don't know what some of those FEMA people tell you guys or not. Um. I can sure go in there and look, um, through the documents, Rod, and see if I can find the CRC estimate for those. Um. But you, you should have access to all of that regardless. They haven't been locked. They're still listed as pending because of the determination memo that they're writing, so.
Amanda, would, if Rod were to call you, would you be able to help walk him through?
Oh yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Wasn't helpful at all?
Yeah, or Lane probably, maybe can.
Lane, do you know how to do it?
I just don't get that little blue review button like I did on my projects.
Oh, and you won't, you won't have that review button, hon, because there's nothing for you to review right now.
So then, how does he look at the estimates though?
Yeah, but you do have access to the DDD, the DI, and the documents.
Okay. I'll call you.
Yeah, give Amanda a call. She knows the system.
Rod, I can give you my cell phone, cause I'm working from home right now.
Okay.
Uh, it's six oh five.
You wanna give that over public? Cause this is gonna be YouTube'd.
Oh God, that's fine.
Okay.
I get so many spam calls on this work phone anyway. I screen them. Um, two nine five seven six five nine.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. I'll be giving you a call.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Moving along. Thanks for the help, Amanda.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks guys. Cute cat, Phyllis.
Oh, you did for him. Yeah, he decided to join the meeting for a while there.
Yep, all right. Bye, guys. Thank you.
But tree removal on Yankton Play Ditch. This on, okay, we'll just.
Well, one thing I, I, I did do on, on the ditch is, uh, so I visited the contractor. We, we talked last, well, last meeting that I went to about, um, a riprapping that last where before it jumps into the Vermillion River, that, the pipe that goes under the, under the, uh, under the, by highway nineteen. So I got, I got, I got costs for that.
Okay, well, that's the next one.
Oh, okay.
I wanna start with it.
No, no, I, um, so the tree removal. Oh, oh, so you're, you're at, I guess.
Tree removal for the, like, that spot, that's, I assume it's on.
Yeah.
I had, I had in my minutes from last time that I was supposed to put it on the agenda for this time.
Oh, okay. I, I, I think what we, we. Okay, I I I think what we we left off was, did we get permission? I I I thought we had talked, one of the, that that when you had your annual meeting, you were going to show them there or shake that out.
I, and I think it might have been in reference to the trees that Mike was talking about last time. I'm not sure.
The trees west?
Oh, yeah, west, the mile west there, there were some trees still standing.
Those few trees that were west of, uh, one road, one mile over.
Okay.
Street.
In between four fifty three.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
There's so many, four fifty four, four fifty five. Let me. I I gotta look. I'll I'll go out there today.
West of the cemetery, the the next road west of the cemetery, whatever.
I I'll go look today. I I just, they're not ringing a bell.
No, Kelvin Hanson and I were driving there when he was showing me and we looked west and there were some still standing. Yeah, that's west of four fifty five.
Yeah.
And we go past west or four fifty five of the project, uh, up to four fifty four.
Yeah.
That's where we stopped, the last two miles.
There, there's not a lot. There's.
Yeah, I'll I'll look at it and and.
And maybe I.
I gotta refresh my memory. I I I don't know.
I think there were just a couple of trees that were there and they weren't real big.
No.
They were enough that he know, he could see them.
Okay, okay, no, we'll do.
Plus, I'd mentioned to him, there's two trees at Holmes Welding. You know, big trees that aren't evergreens. I thought they were part of the project too, but I'm not sure.
So it was that, um, that first.
Right, just.
Yeah, we.
Just to the west of your rip wrap project.
Yeah, so 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 what what we did there is is we kind of tried to be careful, you know? We went up, we left, left, I'll I'll look again, again, but we left some of those on purpose because they were getting kind of borderline on on who they were. So we 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 tried to carefully remove just the ones that were going down the slope because they were all in a row and planted and manicured. They didn't look feral to me, so we.
Well, to me, you know, to me, it looks like it's on the slope of the creek.
Yeah, but but if they were, if if they were kind of, kind of, how do I put it, close and nice, we 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 didn't knock the ones off the top. I I will, we'll look at it.
It's really irrelevant whose whose land it's on because it's the ditch's land. They have a hundred, I I don't remember how many feet, but what I thought I left for Betty, which I must not have, I don't understand what. I don't, I'm sure I don't have it at home anymore, but it showed mile by mile what the easement was back.
Right.
And so we have all the right especially to do what we just did by going down the bottom, no matter whose land it's on.
In the bottom, yes.
The bottom, right.
These were on top, apparently.
Yeah, well, why do we want to cut the trees on top?
Because it was scavenging. I mean, they're not evergreens. I thought it said someplace in there even it wasn't evergreen.
Oh, yeah.
I just am asking.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look, I'll, we'll look at it.
And being as I'm sticking my nose in, there's still that slough just west of Holmes's that never got touched. And there was water standing upstream from it.
That's what we're gonna talk about next.
West of Holmes is not east of Holmes. Yeah, but west of there, there's, there's a slough that's been there for a lot of years and it's still there.
So we're not any further along on Karen's, though, are we?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah.
And that is because of? She's, she's out of the nursing home now.
We got run off when we were there. Or the contractor did, I should say.
Yeah, I know, but by what authority?
No, I don't know.
I thought that the sheriff stopped you. Is that correct?
Me?
No, did the sheriff stop the contractor?
Yes.
By what authority? He wasn't breaking any laws by being in the bottom of that ditch.
Right. I disagree with you on that. Sheriff did not stop the contractor.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
But the problem you run into is you, we don't know what authority we do have. That gets right back to what.
Well, we know what the easement is.
Yes.
So that lets us on there.
Yeah, well, then we should just go ahead and do it then.
Right.
Well, that's what I was thinking the whole time and and.
That's the case.
Commissioner anymore, but you know, maybe if some of you guys would research some of this stuff, you would understand that.
But you know as well as I do that that dragline ate a lot of that easement away. We need to kind of work on the top too. You know, there was supposed to be seventy five feet from the center of the creek on each side. And that would give us room on top, on the flat to work too, while the dragline is cut in previously into that easement. So now it gets sticky.
Place that I know of that the dragline dug in the sixteen years as I was on the commission was a little bit, a little bit of a stretch south of Mecklenburg. And that's where we got out there, Jerry Summerbold and I, and stopped him. And we asked him by what authority he started there. And he said, well, we were told to, and he wouldn't say who. And so just the farmers, we came out and told him to start digging there. And so we stopped it as soon as he started. So I don't know about dragline and the rest of it. I know, they're not in sixteen years I was on.
You've pretty much just worked on the Clay Creek then with the dragline?
And, yeah, exactly. That's where, that's where, that's where Marts was always at and where he was always supposed to have been, but never over on Clay Yankton Ditch.
Okay.
And he's one that went all the way up to, I'm just bad with names anymore. Uh, when you get straight, uh, north of of the High Line Landing, up in there, oh, come on. Well, at any rate, there's Jepsons up on Jepsons. He lost several rows of corn because of that dragline expanding the ditch, potentially, and just that little short stretch.
Okay. If you've got time, I'll write it out with you. See what we're gonna do. Okay, rip wrap on that spot.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry. I got some numbers. And and I drew up a bit work and then you can decide if you, if you want to go with it. Um, so that add that hundred, um, a hundred and five foot of rip wrap is twenty five thousand four hundred thirty eight fifty eight. Shake, shake that channel up a bit, uh, put some fabric on it and rip wrap on top.
What was that number again?
Twenty five thousand four hundred thirty eight fifty eight.
Carrie, do you know we're right on funds?
This is Yankton Clay, right?
Yes.
Um, we have thirty six thousand seven ninety two. That does not include the April taxes.
Okay.
Okay.
Doesn't that culvert not belong to the state? It's a state land that that rip wrap, where it's eroding, that's state property.
They won't do anything to it until it takes the road out, though.
What's their road?
Wasn't the road right there where the culvert's at?
Highway nineteen crosses right there.
Yeah.
Used to be the timber road, but now it's Highway nineteen. The state took that property, I believe, uh, in that little beam out there that, uh, yeah, well, they made it separate.
It has nobody's name on it.
Well.
So that means it's the state usually.
Correct.
I mean, if Clay County had it, Clay County with all those little triangles, we have our name on that one. And like when you come in West Main on the east side there, down by the railroad tracks. Remember the state wanted to know if we wanted that a while back and then, but that has no name on that, on beacon, I'm saying.
But now, sorry, I better get close to this. But that's on the lateral, though, with the ditch, right? The Yankton Clay ditch that it's eating out.
Oh, Yankton Clay, yeah, it's on edge of that.
Yeah, so.
It sounds like we gotta fix it.
Yeah, we're gonna get to fix it because it's not.
It's not, it doesn't matter who owns it.
It's not really the states and it's part of that Clay Yankton ditch, so.
Right.
But that's what I brought up the last time. There's nobody paying taxes on that part either, so, but.
Can that be part of the FEMA repairs?
Staying out of this. No, we didn't put that one down. That's actually been going ongoing for.
Since we got the money in account, I'll make a motion to to go ahead and do it. I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Give me, um, roll call, oh.
Uh, real quick, Brad, do you know how much we have left to pay on the Yankton Clay Ditch project?
Oh.
I think, were we done? There was a little.
No, no, there, there's a ten percent retainer that I held back and 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 a bit of the, um, I do know that, but I don't have it with me. I'm sorry, um.
Okay.
I just wasn't prepared, um, about.
I just want to make sure that by the time that bill comes in.
You figure it out.
I can't, I can't.
Yeah. If you want to rescind the motion till next week, because then we'll have tax dollars also.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
No.
Yeah, we don't want to be in that position.
I have it, I just.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't want to get into that before we knew what that last bill was gonna be.
By the time we did the project, but it'll be easier.
I looked at it yesterday, but I I didn't jot it down.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I will rescind my motion till next week when the next meeting to, uh, and after we see how much money we have.
Put that on the next meeting then, Carrie.
Yeah.
Brad, do you have anything else?
That, that, that's all I had. That's all I had.
Okay. Rod, anything else for ditch board?
Uh, well, there's Prairie Center.
No, I.
He's gonna, there's nothing for that.
Right now.
No, I, I was just gonna give you a FEMA update. And you already got it, so that's all I had.
If nobody has anything else for, for ditch board, retain a motion.
Sole move.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, we're in regular session. Now we need to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Move to go to the Board of Adjustments?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, uh, we're sitting as the Board of Adjustment. Sign request for Clay County Sportsman Club.
Yeah, let's start at the beginning. I got into this because Tony Stokely, the Conservation Officer for our district, or actually for our county, called me after it was turned down for the sign going into, to going down to Clay County Park. And I told him I'd look into it and that's what I've been doing. I'm not a member of either one of those organizations. I really didn't want anything to do with this. I just got called by the game ward because my work with the, uh, Kids Don't Ploke Project down there. At any rate, uh, he said the state would have put that in there, but he put the signs up there. But it's not state property. It's the county's property. So that's why he said he thought it should go to the county. And as to whether you pay for it or not, you know, it means nothing to me, but, uh, there it is.
So. This is what you want on the sign now?
That's what they want on the sign now. And I told him it was an estimate of seventy five dollars per, uh, per sign. Two organizations, their chairmans have contacted me and let me know that they're willing to pay seventy five dollars per sign. That's before they got it so wordy. Now that there's so many words on there, is that gonna up the price?
So are they gonna, well, yeah, because one would be two sign, I mean, one sign will be CCSC Trap Club, correct?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. The last meeting we had, I had CCS. Gee. Shooting something and arrow and it was fifty eight inches long. And the last meeting, we cut it down to CCSC. And so that's what I, I have not had them make it yet.
Well, how about this? What size were we gonna okay with?
Well, it, you know, I said the other sign that's there is forty eight inches long.
Okay.
So it doesn't really matter how deep it goes, you know, so if there was two lines, if it says CCSC Trap Club Vermillion Pistol Club, I'm sure they get it all on one side, but the, the other one we had was, see, the first one we had was CCSG, something else, and that was seventy five bucks a piece. And the way this one is, it's gonna be, it'll be more than that. This was down to forty bucks each. Well, so I just, it's something I, you know, they've got to, they can't just, they gotta put it in perspective. The, the, they don't want a whole bunch of border and a little bit of number. So I cut these down to four inch letters to match the rest of them.
Okay.
And with this short of words on there, it came up eighteen inches long. So I have to resubmit what is on this paper and then we'll see what they come up with.
Leo, Leo, did the Pistol Club ask to be added to the sign then?
Yeah, they did. Uh, I don't quite understand why because they were pretty definite that they didn't want to. But then the guy that's the chairman, uh, ta, uh, emailed back to the chairman of the other club and said that, uh, no, this is the first I've heard of it.
So are they wanting, are they wanting separate?
No, they want it all in one.
All in one?
Well, all in one. What I showed you there was an arrow pointing towards the direction of the park.
But they're a private club, right?
No, they are not.
Okay, so the, the Pistol Club isn't a, is, I can go down there and shoot if I want?
Yeah, well, all you gotta do is get a membership.
But I gotta have a membership.
Yeah.
That's how they, that's how they pay for the insurance and that's how they keep the, our facilities up. And I want you to remind you that that's what we've been told over the years is those are our facilities.
Yeah, I know.
So we can approve a sign that's no longer than forty eight inches and no taller than twelve?
Oh, I'd say twenty four is probably gonna take twenty four inch high side.
Twenty four? Cause I don't care what they put on it then. If they want to put CCSG, A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
I don't care what goes on, which way goes.
I don't care. I mean.
They pay it for it, though.
They're paying for it, yeah. But I mean, they keep coming back with different names all the time.
Yeah, adding a name.
I think we just give them a, a size and that's all it can be and they can figure out who gets to be first.
Well, if you, if you want to pay for it, uh, you, you can do whatever you want to. And if they're gonna pay for it, then you pretty much gotta do what it is that they want to do.
And by next meeting.
But we can limit the size some.
Yeah, you can.
Whatever, whatever name they want to put on, I don't care.
But I, I don't really remember ever having anybody pay for a county sign before.
Well, this is something new on this point. We've never had somebody like to ask for this either.
The Clay County Park signs, highway department.
Yeah, I.
The state.
Now, the state did, but because it was state property.
Right.
I'll get it submitted to the sign company and have it by next meeting what the costs and the size are.
Is this the name they're going with then?
That's what I'm gonna put on the sign.
Do you want me to, oh, no.
Before you do anything, somebody needs to.
Well, I gotta get the artwork done and so I know how big the sign is.
Well, I understand, but you don't, I don't want you to go to all that work and then they come back and go, oh, we want to, we want to change it a little bit.
Well, I've done it four times, five times.
I know. Just, you're done doing that.
Okay.
They're gonna come with a final draft, no changes. Rod, Rod will price it. And that's it. He's wasting too much time doing this. I mean, it's, it's never been the same name every time we've talked about it.
Yeah, it gets a bit irritating.
Yeah, it'd be good actually to even have it in writing from the two different organizations what they want.
Right.
Because I, I don't want it to be that we put the sign up and then someone complains. That's not what we wanted on there.
Thank you, Betty.
Yeah, they need to put it right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leo, for bringing it, but.
And that is what needs to be. I'll text them back and tell them that.
To figure out what they actually want.
And I'll have them contact Rod with the information.
Yes.
And in their email, they said, uh, who do you contact? Where do we pay? So.
Yep.
I'm out here now.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just so in case you don't have one, you can give my email off.
Cause that's almost color your truck, sir.
Yeah, and that quite.
So do we gotta come out of Board of Adjustment? I'll make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, we're in regular session.
I know.
Rod, structure fourteen one fifty zero zero six.
And guess what? It didn't rain, but I got the signatures for this bridge so we can move forward. Thanks to Travis. We went Saturday, met with the landowners. So I need you to, uh, recommend you. recommend your approval on all the right-of-way documents.
This is land deed?
Yes.
Whoa.
Oh, my goodness.
Documents. The right-of-way certificate, the bid letting authorization, and that should cover.
This is land deed?
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve it, and, and, and sign it, that's what we need to do.
I just about signed it Saturday.
Yeah. Sign it quick.
So, yeah. Asked to attest to it to Travis. Well, the newspaper, just, the newspaper helped, I guess, but anyway, so there is a.
So we'll take a motion.
Second.
Did I get a motion made?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Get that sucker out of the way. Only fighting that for what, three years?
Oh, man.
Four years, I don't know. Been forever. It was such stupid.
Two thousand seventeen.
Well, they read. Yeah, I can understand how those things can happen, because, you know, I, I got a communication from the county where I own another county where I own some land, and, you know, they wanted a right-of-way, and this, and they wanted that, and I sort of looked at it and said, I mean, it is like as a landowner, it's, you know, when you get a document like that, it's hard to sort of figure, and, um, like what, what, I mean, they don't tell you when they send you that stuff, what they're gonna use it for, you know, what the limits of their responsibility are.
And by the way.
The only thing is, this was, they lived.
I talked to the.
They knew what was going on.
Right, 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 right.
I'm listening.
Exactly.
Yeah, so am I.
I talked to the state, told them we had the document signed, and of course, they were fairly happy. And they're gonna review them immediately when I get back, they're gonna let me scan them and email them to them, so they don't have to have the hard copy. It's gonna go to bid letting to see if they need to do any updates on the plans, because they've changed some specifications on the bridges, which will only take the engineers, you know, really quick about that.
There's no pink copy.
Oh, that's because I give it to, I forgot to give them a copy.
But I need to sign it before you give it to anybody, right?
Oh, not usually, I usually give them, the, the white one is the main one, that goes to the state.
Okay.
But, um, so they're gonna push this through, and hopefully it'll be on the fall bid letting and construction next year.
Super.
So far, because they want to get this off the books too, this is what's, is still on the old STEM funds, and they want to get it out, uh, out of the books before they lose that money. So, yes, they're, they're waiting. Not as long as we've waited, but they're waiting.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, that's done, list of items to declare surplus and authorization of the auction.
Yeah, and Dennis brought up, I had those on my list too, Dennis, I didn't realize was coming up. So there's a list of the old, the two thousand six Sterling, our old side dump, the old four-door pickup, belly dump, and then the Department of Equalization, we have their Ford Explorer, and I assumed, Ina come in earlier and did that.
It's already been declared surplus.
But I put it on there, because I wasn't for sure. That's what we're taking up, some just smalls. But that'll be on Gerard's auction, um, eighteenth of May is the closing date, and they could start bidding on items on the tenth. So. And we'd already talked earlier about surplus and putting it on the sale, I just did give you a list. I hope that gives Kerry enough time.
Right, well, I'll, I'll move approval, um, to declare these items surplus and put them up for auction.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Transportation study agreement with.
That agreement need to, every time we do something with the state web, sign an agreement, because we'll have to pay some of it. And we, we were approved, I believe I told you a couple meetings ago, for our transportation study, so recommend that you approve the signature.
I'll move to approve the signature of the transportation study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so this is not going to exceed six thousand dollars, our cost?
Uh.
Twenty percent of thirty thousand?
No, the thirty thousand is our.
Oh, that is the.
Yes, that's what we set as the most we were willing to pay.
Okay.
When we sent the, uh, uh, application in.
Yeah, it's twenty percent.
It was a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand, something like that, whatever.
Twenty percent of actual cost.
But that was the max that it will be.
Okay.
And it could be less.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Striping agreement.
Yeah, we, for road striping, we've done this quite a few years. So I recommend that you sign it, and, um, they sent it to Kerry this time, so I haven't seen it. But usually, there's only a set amount, it used to be like an eighty-twenty split between the state, that was ninety-ten, now it's just split up between how many counties do it, and, I mean, we get a little bit out of it, eight, nine thousand dollars. So better than nothing, I guess, safety thing. So I recommend that you sign the agreement.
I'll make a motion to, to sign the agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Right-of-way application for Brian Huth.
Yeah, this is on three oh two east of Wakanda, they want a bore under the road, uh, for a tile, and it's gonna be encased. He did not write down on the permit, and I forgot to add it too, that is an eight-inch tile, be a ten-inch encasement.
Want me to add that?
Yeah, would you? And, uh, so I recommend you approve it, there's nothing that's gonna, nothing that's gonna, um, harm in, in the county right-of-way.
Is the eight-inch gonna fit through that ten-inch encasement?
They said it, um, the corrugated and, uh, uh, this, the tile going under is smooth also, it's gonna be a solid pipe.
Okay.
Like, uh.
It's gonna see, eight-inch corrugated wouldn't fit through.
Heavy-duty, uh, PVC pipe, you know?
Okay.
And I think it's encased in metal. I guess.
Oh, really?
He told me, I, now that I think, because he wanted to know if they could start welding on the pipe this morning, so I guess I'm not, I just know it's gonna be encased, that's the main thing. So I, I recommend you approve it, or if I already said it, I guess.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and these don't cost anything? Right, these right-of-way applications?
No, I, they're gonna bring that up too, but I, I don't like to, I'll let the next guy do that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. They need to sign to, uh.
Who would?
They need to sign.
I thought he did, didn't he? I missed that. I signed it.
Privately application for Anthony Nelson.
This is on four fifty-four, where his dad lives. Mile and a half, or mile south of Jetley Park, somewhere is in there. Uh, they're building a building, um, machine shed, I guess, and they'd like to put a driveway so they could just come off the road uh, into it, and I looked at it, it needs a culvert, which is on, uh, application that they put eighteen-inch culvert in. So I recommend you approve it.
So they have to pay for the carpet, right?
They, it, this is all at.
Yeah.
Landowner's expense, yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now they've got width of entrance at forty, and a forty-foot culvert. Is that gonna work?
No. It's supposed to be forty foot and a twenty-six top. Well, I'll talk to them.
Okay.
We must, we must put it in, so.
They need to sign it, too. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Driveway, two driveway applications for Tom Austin.
Yeah, one of them, um, which first one you got?
Uh, three oh two, I think, three oh four.
Okay, three oh four, this is right west of University, um, the old, oh, now I can't think of his name. Theodore Place, they sold that off, and they extended it out to the east, so now he doesn't have a driveway into the field, um, Tom Austin. So he wants to move the driveway to the east, and before he go down the slope there, and I don't have a problem with it. So I recommend that you approve, what do you want to do, both, and then recommend them both, or you want to do separately?
Let's just do it separately right now.
They're listed separate, so I recommend you approve the three oh four one, which is County Road G.
Yeah, I still move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Uh, that would, would be within that blue box right beside Theodore's old place then.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's just east of that blue box.
Okay, it wouldn't affect that drainage that loops around.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And he owns on both sides of that drainage.
Yes, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
And the other driveway, whoops.
Three oh two.
The other driveway application for the, uh, Tom is on, uh, let's see, I gotta get to the right one.
It's like it's on University.
University Road, half-mile south of three oh two on the east side, he has a waterway coming through his field from the east that runs into the county ditch down, down a little ways, and he wants to put the driveway on the south side of that drainage ditch, it's on the north side now, so he can get in the south side of the field, and then he's gonna remove the old driveway that is there, so he's just basically taking his driveway, putting a new one to the south. And, um, I have no problem with that, um, I recommend you approve it.
So, I'm trying to see where that.
And so that would be.
Can you, if you're on Beacon, if you're.
Yeah.
Go south of that farm place on the east side of the road there, you'll see a drainage ditch, uh, I don't know how, it shows it up as a, like a pretty dark line, there's quite a bit of water comes across that field, and there's driveways on north side of that.
Okay, I see.
And he wants to move it to the south side.
Yeah, okay.
Because he can get in from, through the farm place to the other side. Well, last year he didn't have no trouble getting across it, but.
Right.
Normal. So I recommend you approve that one for Mr. Austin, too.
Alright, so move.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Okay. I did that first.
Any more papers? I don't have this right-of-way application though, for the REA.
That was the one you emailed me, I didn't print a copy, I thought maybe you would bring that, but I can print one and have the girls bring it down.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, I have it. You do? Okay.
I, is that the one I sent you twice?
Yeah.
So right-of-way.
You're just double covering.
I got this one on Friday, so this is for the Bluff Road, under the Bluff Road, um, oh, is it Justin Orr's new machine shed?
Okay.
So, and Clay Unit, this is for Clay Union Electric. So I recommend you approve that one also.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Gas quote.
Have a gas quote, Brunick's is a little bitter.
Move to approve Brunick's as the low bidder for gas.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. You got anything else, Rod?
Yeah, but it just slipped my mind.
Well, when it comes to you, we'll come back, just let me know.
Okay, I got it. I remember.
Okay.
Okay, so you know, we lost our mechanic. Quit here a month ago. And Larry and I have looked over the situation, and we kind of decided we're gonna go without a mechanic till at least January, because we have another guy retiring, so we're gonna hire somebody for the crew. We're going with, uh, Interstate Power um, out of Sioux Falls to do just our oil changes, something breaks down on the road, they come down. But pretty much everything is so new that we have to have computers to work on everything, and I hate to complain about having new equipment, don't get me wrong. But to get them to work, we were hauling stuff to Sioux Falls to get it worked on. Now, these guys are the Detroit dealer, which, that's what our new dump trucks have in them, they're the Allison Transmission Dealer, have in them, they're the Allison Transmission Dealer, which that's what we have for our transmissions, so we're gonna give them a shot and see, there's nothing to pay. We don't have to pay so much a month, we just try to make it as convenient, we have three, four trucks, need an oil change at the same time, they come down to us, we don't, no mileage. They come down to us and change the oil. Service the truck, look it over, give it a, like a hundred point, fifty point inspection every time, so the brakes and everything are good, the trucks go ten thousand miles in between oil changes. Um, our Caterpillar equipment's all on eighty-four month um, service agreements, you know, uh, extended warranty when we purchased them, so we got only two Caterpillars that don't have no, we only have one, our loader, that is an extended warranty. Basically, oil changes. You know, stuff like that, where I want somebody that knows what they're doing. Putting their oil in, make sure all the filters get changed, instead of just one, now check the air filter, check brakes, and all that kind of stuff, let us know. If there's something going on, they will work on our older vehicles, but talk to Brunick's about doing oil changes on the pickup, uh, my pickup, Charlie and Wakanda is gonna do them, because we're, on Fridays, my pickup just sitting there anyway, so if it needs an oil change. So we're gonna give that a try and see what happens.
So what about like any minor stuff, you guys got somebody that, you can fix some of that, like change tires or whatever?
Well, that, we have a tire machine.
Okay.
But a lot of times we blow a tire or something, um, we'd bring it to Brunick's anyway.
Okay.
And, um, like buying the tires, when we buy the tires, usually we have to buy it off state bid, which is a lot of it comes through Graham, Tire Allied in Sioux Falls, and then Brunick's will put them on for us, because he can't, he can't sell off the state bid. But he's on our pickups and stuff, he just come in, he put them on, balancing, you know, so big tires, we've never done that, JFI, our loader tires, we've had Graham do that, our, uh, our grader tires.
What about your truck tires?
And JFI's been doing the truck tires, too. We had one blow up in the back room
Yeah.
here a while back, and it was in a cage, but yeah, I
Yeah.
For what a tire cost and what it costs for us to have to pay for somebody, I just sued JFI.
Oh, that's
Do it, I mean, we, we'll take, change tires, we have spare tires, you know, they'll jack it up, change the tire. But yeah, fixing tires.
We don't have any old twenty splits or anything like that, do we?
Uh, just one truck, I believe, and that's our eighty-five International that our distributor is on, which we're working on getting the distributor switched over to one of the dump trucks that we held back a few years back. But yeah, that's, I think, is the only one that has split rims on it anymore, and that yeah, because I think that has the five
Five spoke?
Five spokes on it, so yeah, that part is nice to be rid of, too.
Yeah, yeah, let somebody else change those.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
For what they, for what we paid for a guy to stand there take time to change it, and get a chance of getting hurt.
Yeah.
We bring them up there, they put them on the truck, and I mean, it's to me, it's like driving my pickup to the car wash for a ten dollar car wash. If I had to pay somebody to wash it, it's twenty-five bucks. Yeah, I mean, it's just a no-brainer. So we thought we'd give it a try and see how this goes, they do have the guy that's coming down, change oil will come down. If we're break down on the road, they'll be there. Right now, we're the only one that he is dealing with, this mechanic. They bought him a brand-new service truck, they're getting him a computer, they're getting him a cell phone. And he's been a cat, he worked for Cat out in Gillette, Wyoming. So we're kind of excited or curious to see how this goes, well I guess the biggest reason is I've talked to some young guys that mechanic and they won't even be willing to even come for less than thirty-five bucks an hour.
Let's try it.
Even with the benefits.
Let's just try it.
You know, so I figured, you know, by the time we pay sixty thousand dollars a year, we'll keep track of what we're spending this way, and this might be a cheaper
Well, they're not gonna charge you mileage, which is a good deal, and then are they gonna charge you cost from the minute they leave, or not?
Uh, I'm not sure about the time.
Because that can be a difference, too, because
Because we have a, uh, the actual mechanic that's gonna be doing it, we got a meeting to meet with him next Monday, and then we passed along all the VIN numbers and everything, so they can make us up a sheet, and then they're gonna give us a checklist. Uh, Dan always filled out, we just had a few, like, filters, miles, hours, and then we get our oil samples, everything gets an oil sample, so we keep track of that, they'll continue to do that till our, and they're using our filters, excuse me, and our oil until we get our inventory down, and then it'll be then, it'll be oil from them, which they said were Detroit says we should be using a different oil than what we're using. We're not voiding our warranty, but they'd like to see the other, cost the same. So we won't have to have oil on inventories and all them stupid spill things that keep Wayne from getting after me and the safety board, when, if we have oil spills, so.
You don't have oil spills.
Are you able to have oil changes done on Friday, then, when the trucks are just sitting there?
Oh, yeah, and we told him we could do that.
That's nice.
If they would agree, and he said it didn't matter. So if we can line it up for a Friday, somebody go out and open the door for him and get them all lined up, and we told him that in Clement weather, you know, we'll pull something out, he can work in the shop, you know, try to work with them as much as we can to get a little and they're, they're doing a couple counties over in Minnesota, but not through their store. So unfortunately, we're gonna be the first one in South Dakota. So I hate being the I know the first, but I think it's a good I think it's worth a try, um, you know, if you're willing, if you guys agree.
I think you're going along the right, right way, because like you said, everything's got computers and many more, you got, they, they've actually come out with a computer to, to work on the tractor.
Right.
From our tractors and stuff, so they made a difference.
Right, and they already have, like, for our, our trucks, they're a sister company to State Freightliner, who, where we bought the trucks from, so they have access to everything we need, unlike when we had to take the cats up to Butler.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't even come look at them, you, we had to haul them up on a low boy. Something breaks down, they're coming down here to us, there a little more.
Yeah, you'd be a lot better.
So that, that's all I have, I think, I hope. I, and I don't know if we, I handle another two-week interval. It's been crazy, last two weeks of a stack of stuff, everybody for some reason, everybody waits till the third Tuesday of the month to get something. Take care, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Vouchers and payroll, we get to see them?
No, I haven't, because they came this morning, right?
They came
Yes, I sent them out first thing this morning.
This morning, did it?
Yeah, I didn't get them out last night, I'm sorry.
Next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, possible reschedule, or?
Can I have a, on, on one of those vouchers, Carrie? Is that the one for, uh, the Windroll Buster? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
Okay, well, there's, there's a voucher, I don't know if it's in there for this pay period, I thought it was gonna be. But I'm purchasing a Windroll Buster, so when we pull our shoulders, I don't know if you noticed, we pulled we made two passes on our gravel roads, pulled the shoulders back in while the, the sod gets ahead of you. And we've been getting a lot of complaints about how rough our gravel roads are, because we got the sod laid across small, not big chunks. And they're beating them up, so I got a Windroll Buster in Minnesota, and it's, the Yankton County bought one for about forty grand, this is seventy-five hundred. And like I was telling Travis the other day, that this won't limit us to when we can pull our shoulders. If, if we get a little more sod in there, that's fine, you windrow it up, you drive it down, and this pulverizes it. You know, I mean, we don't want grass that tall, but even already without the rain, the last road we pulled, I think, was west, east of your place, and there's a lot of, a lot of sod ended up in there. So just, it's Windroll Buster, but it'll just be a man's name on it. That's the way he does business, so, I don't know, I can't remember the guy's name.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, though?
Yeah, so if you see that, just so you know, that's what my plan was, and, and, you know, if you prove it, that, and if you don't, that's fine, too, but I did have money set aside for the other one, but that's way too expensive for what we use it for.
Well, if it was in your budget, we've already approved it, so.
Yeah.
Anything else, Rod?
No, thank you.
All right, uh, possible reschedule next week?
Um, I have county workshop next week, and so I was hoping that maybe we could reschedule till Thursday. If not, I can just have Nicole take the minutes. Whatever works best for you.
I, I think as of right now, until you teach her how the whole system works better, we better reschedule.
I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Go ahead and finish what you have.
Too late, you're already off.
Yeah, you're done.
That's Thursday, the sixth.
Yes.
That'd work.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes.
May sixth.
Somebody needs to bring cake, then.
I was gonna bring you guys pie to celebrate the closeout at I-Gay, so I'm gonna be on.
Pie? Next Thursday?
Would I
It's my birthday next Thursday.
Isn't it really?
Yes, so.
Ice cream with it, too? You gotta have pie, gotta have ice cream.
That's American, yeah.
Cherry pie.
I love that.
Here, here.
This doesn't work.
Oh, okay, right.
Okay.
Can I bring my other thing up? Okay, we mentioned it at the last meeting, and I kind of forgot about it, though. Another incident on three oh-two, digging in a road ditch, happened since the last one I brought up, so no, I'm just, I have a question, do we wanna send them some kind of letter, or do I wait till next week and bring it up?
We'll put it on the agenda next week. Because we sent a letter on the last one, correct, are we going?
No, we haven't yet, well, I don't.
Okay, we'll do it all next week, I guess, because there's three of them to send.
Well, the one's the driveway.
Yeah, the two's over by Baffal Hall.
Oh, well, I talked to them personally.
Okay.
I don't know what they're gonna do about it.
Okay, so we need two, at least. Okay. You got that for next weekend? Okay. Are you sure? Thank you.
See you, Rod, see you, Larry.
See ya.
Letter of support for bond issue, everybody get to see this? From
Phyllis.
I've got a little bit of editing I did to it, nothing substantive, just, uh, just editing, not, uh, it wasn't peer review, it was editorial. And I already talked to Phyllis about it, but I didn't show her my, my changes.
God, he's crossed out everything, Phyllis.
Yeah, that's the way it goes, you know? It was submitted so that there was something to deal with.
Yeah, yes, good.
No, I think it looks really good, but there were a few run-on sentence in there in the middle that I wanted to fix, and a few other small, like I say, editorial changes, not substantive changes.
Is the poverty level only twenty-six?
I
Pardon me? The poverty level, is it only twenty-six? I was thinking it was thirty-something.
There are million. Poverty levels, so.
Sorry, Phyllis, what?
I said, I found three different poverty levels, so I just chose one.
Okay. Carrie, Carrie reminded, a million is over thirty.
Okay.
The other, the other thing is there are different ways of measuring poverty, so I mean, that's why you've got a variety of statistics. I know one of the most commonly used ones here, because it's so easy to update every year, is those eligible for school lunch programs. And that tends to be higher than the basic federal poverty level.
Whatever level we wanna put in there that is correct, would, I will agree with, I just chose one.
I'm sure countywide, it probably is twenty-six.
Yeah, I think you're going to be pretty close, I mean, I don't know if it's
And I guess if they wanna, if somebody wants to argue that point, then
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a mute point, I mean, it, well, it isn't, but it
It's, it's high, that's all we need.
Yeah.
That's all we need to measure, anyway.
Exactly.
So this is going in the paper, then? Do we need a more, correct?
My recommendation is that we get it in the paper, we get it on our webpage, uh, put it on Facebook if possible, or other
Everywhere.
Everywhere, we can put it.
So is this gonna be a letter? Go ahead, Bob.
I think your deadline to get it in the plane talk is today for the next issue.
But is this gonna be a letter to the editor, or are we having this published?
That, that's up to you folks.
Because
But, uh, but whatever you wanna put in the plane talk, I'm pretty sure their deadline is today.
Okay. Lexi, have you been able to read this? Because we can only, we can only pay for factual
Right, I, I'm just looking at this right now, um.
This is the run-on that fixed.
Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise, that's just little things.
Well, that's little, too, it's just breaking that sentence out.
Right.
Of course, I guess if, if the paper would just run it, I guess we don't have to pay for that, correct?
You don't pay for letters to the editor, right?
No, but this is a long letter to the editor. It'd be nice if it was in its own article, maybe, I don't know, how did you, how do you intend to see it, uh, Phyllis?
I must admit, I oh, I was hoping that they might pick it up as a story, as they have on many of our meetings lately.
Okay.
If you, Dick, if you wanted to hand me those changes, I can make those and then print a new copy.
Hopefully, you can read it.
Do we have a formal press release? List that we send to, you know, Calo and the rest of the medias. You know, I feel that, you know, if we are looking for broad readership, it should be out there as a press release from the county.
Sounds good, we've gotta be able to figure out how to do it somehow.
And of course, you know, my, my pencil scratchings are, um, you know, to year-all approval, too, but she can get those changed and with Phyllis's approval.
Yeah.
It was just, like I say, mainly just editing.
So I guess it doesn't have to be in
Can we put it in the broadcaster?
Oh, yeah.
Because I, actually, I think more people probably read the broadcast than they do the plane talk.
If they'll, you know, it depends on how, if we have to pay to put it in there, or if they'll just put it in there, that's what we gotta be
I guess we'd have to pay for it in the broadcaster, probably.
So if, if a private person like myself pays for it, put it in the broadcaster, that's possible?
Yep.
I'm willing to pay for it in the broadcaster.
It's possible, however, the caveat that if it's over a hundred dollars, you have to fill out a campaign finance report. So you're certainly allowed to do that, you just have to fill out the report.
Does it matter if more than one person pays for it, then?
That's probably total.
Is it total?
Um, you know, I don't think it really specifies, I'd have to ask the Secretary of State's office.
Tell him you'll give him ninety-nine dollars.
That'd be enough, yeah, that's a negotiating point.
I mean, I think if you start out with this as a press release, and figure out, and if that's something that you wanna publish in some other fashion. Yeah, if you post a press release on the county website identifying why the county is where it's at, um, why you've made the choices that you have, I think that you're probably okay doing that, because it doesn't cost anything, um, if you particularly as you terminate a declaration of necessity and so on and so forth. Um, I think once you start paying for advertising in that regard, I just want us to be cautious, making sure we're adhering to campaign finance rules.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I, you know, I'll be voting no, because I disagree
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I, you know, I'll be voting no, because I disagree fundamentally with the idea of, you know, us becoming advocates. I mean, I think what we did was, we put it forward to bond. And I think as a commission, our job at this point is, um, you know, to, uh, put the facts out there and let, let, let people, people decide.
I guess when I read it, the way Phyllis wrote it, I think she's got the facts there, that's my opinion. And so by having the facts out there, I don't think we're giving them anything but the facts. I don't, I don't see things here that are, that are out of line in that respect, but you know, personally, that's my personal opinion. And, you know, and I guess as a, somebody that believes in it, I believe that I don't have a problem with paying it out of my own pocket.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I, I respect that.
Yeah, I, I see it as a, actual, actually, it was a quite factual document.
Yes.
I felt pretty comfortable about that part.
But, so, we just gotta figure out how we're gonna do this here, though. We just need to. So can we put it, so what you're saying, Lexi, is we can kids can contact, we can put it on social media first and then go to the plane talk, or how do you think here?
Well, we can do the press release.
Right.
Phyllis was talking. And put it on our website. But after it's, after Carrie gets done.
I mean, I I would agree that I think the vast, vast majority of this is squarely within facts.
Correct.
I mean, you are putting out there information that identifies what it's about, that identifies, um, you know, what's some of the options I've looked at, what some of the requirements are. There's only a couple of spots that I think could even be deemed as taking sides in something.
The last sentence is advocating.
Correct.
Uh, the last two sentences, perhaps.
And, um, you know, the, the second paragraph starts, this is a letter of support for this project, signed by the majority of the Clay County Commission. So that's where, you know, there's a couple of spots taking an, an advocating role for passage. I just struggle with this, and that's where it would be helpful to receive some additional guidance from the Secretary of State about a, a situation like this with bond measures, because from my standpoint, I don't know why on earth you all would take actions that you don't support. So when you, when you vote, particularly with the unanimous vote, I, it's hard for me to understand how you can't advocate for the citizens supporting that vote. And I mean, I mean, taking the next steps to further that. So I just struggle a little bit with, with the concept of, um, not being able to, to move forward to something like this and, and do that, and even fund it. I mean, to me, when you're publishing information about why you came to the decision you did as a board.
That's factual information.
It, it is, and if it was anything other than something going on a ballot, you wouldn't hesitate at all to put that information out there, and to even potentially spend money to educate the public about that. And that's the point of this letter, is to educate the public when making a decision about a vote. So that's the only thing that I, maybe it would be helpful to get some additional clarification from the Secretary of State's office about when does this become something that, that triggers or violates campaign finance?
Do you know what they're gonna say? Ask your state's attorney. That's kind of their standard answer, so.
Well, if it's, uh, if it's sent from the state's attorney's office saying, help me here, what do you think of from, from peer? How's this look from peer?
Well, the one thing, I mean, it's Lexi's job to try and defend us on the decisions we make. So if we make that decision, I mean, it sounds like it's defendable.
Yeah.
But if we want to stay out of the gray area.
Yep.
And so where does that go?
If there is, okay, is there anything you think?
I just think, and, and I'm gonna
Okay, need to replace the jail court.
I'm gonna come full circle on this, a little bit, because I think that, that if funding publication of this.
Courthouse and other, other offices.
Is deemed inappropriate conduct. I think the commission needs to be very, very careful what public monies they give to an entity that is going to oppose such things.
I did this the six.
Because that's gonna get into a graying of campaign finance monies and co-mingling, and I just think that I mean, I read this and, and I don't really have any heartburn over it, let me, let me find a statute that specifically addresses this.
This is Andy, could I weigh in real quick?
Yeah.
I was just gonna suggest that, I think the real issue is only expending the public funds to persuade rather than educate. If you don't spend public funds, I don't know what the problem is. If you, if you submit this as a letter to the editor, or as a press release, that they can run or not run, you haven't expended any public money. If you put it on the county's website that's publicly funded, I think that's a question. As long as you don't expend public funds, you're entitled to your opinions. And, and Phyllis could run her letter as a letter editor all day long with, and, and doesn't spend any money, so. I think that's just the, the, you know, if you, if you keep it simple, uh, you should be just fine.
You just figure out what it's gonna cost for the broadcaster then, and do it some other way.
Yeah, if you run it as a broadcaster ad, you will have to pay for that, and then you, then you have to make sure that it's clearly educational and not persuasive. If you spend money. But a letter to the editors, uh, free.
My question is, is this, if it's written like, right, if it is right now, put it in the broadcast, and we didn't pay, use county money, would this be considered educational? To me, it is. But that doesn't mean it's right.
And as we're thinking about earlier, that there's probably three sentences that would be considered persuasive.
Carrie, can you just figure out what it's gonna cost to put it in the broadcaster?
Yeah.
If we can just use this as a letter to the editor and a press release.
Bob had a question or comment.
I'm at a bit of a disadvantage, because I don't have the letter in front of me, but Alexis made what I think is a key point. You're on record unanimously of advocating for this recommendation. What's the problem? I mean, I think a letter to the editor at no cost, as Andy points out, is, is probably your best bet.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to figure out the other publications, other avenues.
Yeah.
What we can do with it. But we'll start with the letter to the editor and the press release, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, and we can, we can change formatting a little bit between those avenues also.
You could drop the last couple of sentences, I was trying to pull it up myself, and I got too long of agenda there. Take out the persuasive, even though they're my favorite sentences, but, um, but those or anything that you pay for.
Yeah, the, the last, uh, that last, uh, sentence in the second to the last deal, where it talks about the twenty-six percent poverty rate.
Well, that's
What I would say is I would hesitate to encourage you guys to take out things that are going to explain why you came to the position you're in. It, but then it's just a matter of characterizing it, so let me read the statute that, that we're looking at for campaign finance requirements is twelve twenty-seven twenty, expenditure of public funds to influence election outcome prohibited. The state and agency of the state, and the governing body of any county municipality or the political subdivision of the state, may not expend or permit the expenditure of public funds for the purpose of influencing the nomination or election of any candidate, for the petitioning of a ballot question on, on the ballot, or the adoption or defeat of any ballot question. This section may not be construed to limit the freedom of speech of any officer or employee of the state, or any political subdivision, who is speaking in the officer's or employee's personal capacity. This section does not prohibit the state, its agencies, or governing body of any political subdivision of the state from presenting factual information solely for the purpose of educating the, the voters on a ballot question. So what I would say is, if you're going to pay to publish this, um, let's, let's maybe rework it a little bit. If you're gonna issue a press release, and you're not, um, spending public funds to do that, and somebody decides to pick it up or not, that's their choice. So I, I agree, as Andy said, coming full circle, this is about expending expenditure of public funds for influencing solely. So if you're, a, a, and then to take that a step beyond, you can expend public funds to simply educate the voters. But that's where I think then we, we want to rework portions of that, and I, you know, I don't want to have a conversation about this over, from a legal standpoint, I don't want to have a conversation about this. And, and, and have it be interpreted that there's only three lines that I.
And that the template for, I think, what, um, uh, the statute means is the way that the Secretary of State's office writes their explanations of valid questions, right? So, uh, you know, yeah, so, so, so I think if you're saying what it is and what it pays for, and so on, that's perfectly legitimate, but once you get into other territory, I, you know, I, I think it's an issue. But what the statute makes clear is that anybody, any private individual, any member of this commission who wants to publish a advocacy letter, is absolutely free to do it under their own name. Right?
And so to that end, what I would suggest, Mike, if you want to do this, you sign onto this, Phyllis signs onto this, Dick signs, whoever in here wants to put their name on this and, and spend the money to fund that, to publish it, I mean, I think that that's, that's okay, my recollection and, and I want to go back and look at it. But then I would say, you've got a hundred dollars a piece that you can spend.
Yep.
But I, I, I just want to double check how they view that, then, if you're all signing the same letter, is it collectively, or do you got to form a ballot question? Can you, when does, when do those funds get triggered that you actually have to form a ballot question committee? Have a treasurer? Maybe that's something somebody wants to do, I don't know.
So on this letter, if it's gonna be a letter to the editor or a press release, sorry, Phyllis, I'm just too far away from the microphone. If this is gonna be a letter to the editor or a press release, how is it signed? Who do, who? What do we put at the bottom? Clay County Commissioners, individual names?
I think like anything else.
Okay, I saw individual names, cause I didn't believe Betty would be signing it.
Okay.
I specifically said majority rather than all. I was very careful to not address anything as all, other than all passed it.
But we all did pass it, though.
Right, but this letter, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I, I think that last, second to the last paragraph, that, that talks about service efficiency and total price for a county that is approximately twenty percent, twenty-six percent poverty rate, requires we choose the least expensive and most efficient choice. That's a big part of my vote, right there. It's a big part of why I supported this, and in fact, uh, was the, I, I proposed the, the, uh, the language.
And then as far as how you sign it, I think that's kind of up to you all, you know, if you have a majority vote to, that you approve this press release, um, I think you can sign it as the Clay County Commission. Um, if you prefer, on a more, you know, individual basis, identify that this is who, which commissioners this is coming from, I think you can do that as well. And how I would equate that is, there's been some uh, news regarding an elected official at the state level, where various entities took positions on what that person should be doing in their professional capacity. Some organizations chose to take a vote of their membership to come out publicly asking for that person's resignation. And there were members of that, and those entities that were not supportive of that, that were very angry, because they said, I don't want our association on that. Other entities said, if we get a, you know, say a two-thirds vote of our membership, that we're gonna put our name on it, then we'll sign that, and it goes out, and I think you're pretty squarely within your realm to do that. Still, others said, I think it should be in a letter, if we're gonna go that route, with individuals signing their names, so we clearly identify who's doing that in their capacity, and so I, I don't know that there's necessarily a wrong way to do that, as long as you have a majority of vote. But it's just preference on what you want to do in that regard, is how you want to portray, put that information out.
But we can put individual names, we've done it before.
That's fine. So we gotta try to send it as a letter to the editor, and then, and then also a press, or as a press release, or?
And a letter to the editor.
Okay.
And on the website.
Okay.
And, and social media.
Can we put it on the website?
They said that's probably money.
Yeah, I don't think that costs any money, so.
So they're good. And then we can, if we.
We can figure out what it's gonna cost to put it in the broadcaster.
Right, and I really don't see, if we're signing our names to this, and we put it in the broadcast, whoever wants to sign it, I don't see why you have to change it any.
We shouldn't.
Because I'm acting as an individual, not as a commissioner, even though that's what I am, but if I put it in there and I'm paying for it, or Travis is paying for it, or Dick, or Betty, or whoever's paying for it, I mean, that's, that's our right as a citizen.
Yeah, once, once Carrie's done with the final draft.
That's what I think.
That's how we'll put it in there, no matter, you know.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it, it's written, you know.
Me too. Well, I thought you had a bunch of chicken scratches.
I've got chicken scratches that are editorial nature, not.
I, uh, and, and I updated with those chicken scratches, so at any point in time when we feel we have a final copy, I can click print and have Jess or Nicole bring it down, so.
And then I would remove the letterhead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Remove the letterhead, got it.
Very good. Well, do we need a motion then?
Let's, we've got other stuff.
Okay.
She can finish, they'll bring it back down, give it to us.
Okay.
And then we can approve it, however we want.
Did, in your opinion, did my editorial changes make any sense?
I think they did, yes.
Okay.
And I, I did go over them pretty quickly, and, um, but if you guys want, I can send out a final copy too. So.
I have difficulty switching screens to even see something else other than you guys, so a final copy, I probably would not see, but trusting Dick, I'll say it has my approval.
Oh, man.
I can read it too. I can read it if you'd like.
And I don't know, I mean, if you're doing a press release and you're voting on this as commissioner business, and then just voting to individually sign this, I don't, you know, just having the commissioners who support the yes vote, and this is a press release, I don't necessarily think you do need to remove the letterhead. I think it's if you're taking this, and you're gonna go publish this in a newspaper and spend money on it.
Right.
That's where I think I, using, you know, that statute identifies you and your individual capacity can say what you want to say.
Yeah, I mean, if this letter gets paid to be published, that letterhead's gotta come off.
So am I printing the final copy with the letterhead or without?
With, because it'll be a press release from the commissioners.
Okay.
If it passes unanimously. And the letter to the editor will be from the commissioners.
Okay. So I'm gonna go back.
So it should be fine. It's only if you spend public funds. But if you were to take it, oops, if you were to take it individually, that can't be on there.
Right.
Yeah.
And then what I would suggest is, if you're gonna do that, that you as an individual, then put it, you know, i- if you're taking out ad space to publish this press release, you need to, wow, and you need to identify on there, so, so it's, it's this, and save yourself a little space to say, you know, the following individuals are, yeah, have you paid for by yeah, however you want to identify that on there.
It can just be whoever wants to put their name on it.
But she's right, you gotta better say paid by.
Oh, well, yeah, they're gonna tell you that at the newspaper anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
I should be bringing that down, cause I just clicked the print button, if it all worked like it's supposed to up there.
So we'll go to the approval of. So we'll go to the approval of advertisement for roof and tuck pointing and set bid opening. Do you have a date, Carrie?
Um, I think it's all in the packet there, uh, in that notice.
May seventeenth, mandatory pre-bid meetings on ten o'clock on May seventeenth. Bids are due by nine fifteen on May twenty-five.
And then bid opening, I think I had at nine thirty.
Yes.
So that way, if they deliver them upstairs, then there's time to bring them down here, so.
Do you have to put the bid opening time in there?
Um, is it not in there? I thought it was in there. Is it in that first paragraph, maybe?
It just says bids are due as, but I didn't say, I don't think it's got, wait a minute.
No, it's got at nine.
Up on the first.
Yeah, first, first, uh.
First paragraph's got nine thirty, at which time and place bids and proposals will be received publicly, open and read aloud.
Okay.
Yeah. Looks good.
And this is almost as important as the letter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you guys care? I just noticed that I printed it in black and white. Do you care if the letterhead is in color? Or are, are you guys signing or do you?
What we're doing right now, no.
Okay. All right, so.
So we need a, we need a motion on this, so to do this.
On the tuck pointing, yeah, Seth did the eight in bedtime.
Yep, I so moved.
I have a motion and a second. And just for me, what day and time was that again? Cause I couldn't find it here.
Twenty-fifth day of May, uh, at nine thirty.
Okay.
Okay, so then going back to the, the letter, nobody's signing anything today, we're just sending it out as a press release. And am I putting?
No, we'll sign it.
Okay.
If it's going, yeah.
If it's going to pass, we'll. Is that how you would rather have it, Betty?
Yeah, that's comfortable, thank you.
And I hate to jump the gun, assuming you're going to vote against it, but I mean, if that's.
You guessed, you guessed.
Okay, so we've got the twenty-fifth of May at nine thirty for the tuck pointing and bid opening.
Sorry, I guess I got off track there.
And I've got a motion in a second, so any further discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, letter of support for bond issue. Take a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, put it in a press release and letter to the editor. Is that all?
Yep.
Worked it off.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, oh, Bob?
Just had a thought. Once this appears in the, uh, clean talk, why couldn't I either as your committee chair or a private citizen take out an ad in the broadcaster thanking and endorsing the commissioner's action? And put at the bottom, paid for by Bob Fuller.
You can.
Okay.
With the copy, if you spend over a hundred dollars, there's just a campaign finance form that you have to fill out. So. And it's just basically, yep, just to basically disclosing that you as a private citizen paid for this ad at X amount of dollars, if it's over a hundred dollars.
That sucks.
Has the committee that opposed doing that?
What's that, Phyllis?
Is the committee that's opposed, they're running ads?
Yes, yes, they filed their, um, uh, statement of organization for their ballot committee.
They did, okay. Question, also, can a, each of us or other citizens copy the letter or do a support of the letter on Facebook?
Yeah, I think it can be shared, once it's out there.
That's what I'm, very good.
So then am I also?
And I would all, I, that's, I think I'm going to get to where you're going with Mike's motion to put it on the Clay County's Facebook website, or Facebook page.
Okay. That's where I was going, is, am I doing that and putting it on the website?
Yeah, that's. You want to amend your motion?
Yep, I'll amend my motion to, that, and I thought that's what I was doing, but anyhow, that's fine. Yeah, so I'm in my motion to put it on the county's Facebook, uh, website.
Well, there's a different, there's a website and then there's a Facebook page.
Okay, okay, Facebook page.
And the website.
And the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
My missed release. And the editor.
Got it.
Okay.
That's okay.
Second, okay, so I have a motion in a second to, it'll be a letter to the editor, a press release on the county website and on the Facebook page.
Wow.
Don't forget to billboard. Billboard.
Very good.
Any further discussion?
You didn't hear of one of those airplane.
Yeah.
Okay.
So hearing no further discussion, uh, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith, no, Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. So, so at the bottom of the letter, just add the four names.
Okay.
That were yes.
Okay.
Thank, thank you very much, that's a huge step, a huge step.
Thank you.
Bob, when's the next committee meeting?
Right.
Uh, this, this Thursday night.
Okay, is that a Zoom one? Okay.
Uh, I'm assuming Carrie will send a link out.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Only two commissioners can attend.
No.
I can certainly post it, yeah, I can post it so you can all be there.
Whatever.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Every, everyone from now on will be posted.
Excellent.
Good.
Clay County Park Board update.
Oh, yeah, so thi- this is just three minutes, um, to let everybody know that, um, the VCDC agreed to, um, host a reservation system, um, and to take phone calls. So, you know, if somebody's confused about the website, um, you know, they can help them, help them to register. Uh, and, um, yeah, so, so, so it, uh, the, the big holdup now is, um, you know, there's been some dissension, I think, and you may hear some complaints from, um, the, um, uh, the staff at the park, um, are not, they're not happy about it. They have opposed this for a long time. But, um, the deal will be that people can register online, um, with a credit card or, um, you know, they can call the chamber during business hours and make a reservation and they can pay by check on site. Um, we're basically trying to take cash out of, out of the system. And all campsites, um, will be subject to the online registration system, but they'll still be divided, some people can do the whole season, some people can reserve in advance, and then other camp sites are on a first come, first served basis. Um, and so there'll be a big sign, um, at the entrance to the campground that has the phone numbers to call and the website on which, on which to register and the basic park rules. And the state, um, the state will actually make, um, make those signs. Yeah, so I, I, I think it will, it will solve the problem, no doubt. There will be some, um, issues as we transition to the reservation system. You know, the, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a little difficult to get maps. Uh, but I think within the next few days, you'll, you'll see that site, that site go online. So we can, if we want to, um, even link, um, link that to the county, um, the county website if, if, if we want to. They're actually going to put up a website that has photographs of the park and a map with the sites numbered on it, so you know which site you're getting. And, uh, the price will go up a little bit, so for, um, uh, uh, campers and RVs, it'll go up to twenty-five dollars, which will more than cover, um, the cost of, you know, having an online reservation system that's available twenty-four seven. So that's the, that's the scoop on that. Um, and then, uh, May first, um, we're hosting a, um, a park cleanup session. And it's, it's interesting, I mean, the, the park's been really, uh, you know, there's just been a lot of trash and beer cans and stuff. But I think after the event this past weekend, the Hammock Festival or whatever they were calling it, it looks like they cleaned up a lot.
It's cleaned up perfectly.
It's really cleaned up, so I, you know, I, I'm, I feel a little badly for the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts coming because
I went out on Sunday morning.
They may not have enough to pick up.
Yeah, and it was, it was pretty well, I found, uh, one paper plate and, uh, there was another small scrap of paper, it was every, that was all that was in the entire camp.
Yeah, so.
That was Sunday morning after the.
Well, maybe on May first, you can send them out into the trees.
Yeah.
Cause it sounds like 4H is coming too.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
So there'll be a lot of kids if there's nothing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as our, the county website, is there going to be a spot? Or can there be a spot that says Clay County Park and then it redirects them to?
Oh, yeah.
The chamber?
Yep, that's easy to do.
We can send the 4H down the trails and down at the boat ramp and up at the picnic area. Those, those places I didn't look at and they probably have some trash.
Okay, and I, you know, sadly, although I hike that park all the time, I'm not in hiking shape these days. It's going to be another five weeks, um, so, you know, um, but, but Al said he'd provide trash bags and, um, I'll, I'll get lemonade and donuts and, you know, we'll, we'll have, we'll have an event. Uh, you know, anything that brings people to that park and makes them love the park is, is a, is a great thing.
And what was that date?
Uh, May first, that's this Saturday at, um, uh, ten to twelve. But those hammock people were amazing, the way they cleaned up was awesome.
Good deal.
Did they break the record, do you know?
Nope.
They didn't break the record?
We only made it to ninety-five, the record is a hundred and twenty-six. And, uh, I felt kind of bad, I, uh, visiting with Margaret Meyer Henry, the organizer. I, I told her that we shouldn't just break the record, we should smash it. But unfortunately, we didn't make that. Next year, we're really hoping, next year, I talked to both, uh, Margaret and Todd Meyer Henry, her father, and they're interested in doing this again next year, maybe annually. She's only a sophomore, so I'm sure we could get it, keep it going for three years.
So they, they have a hammock club, that's, that's who puts this on as the Hammock Club at USD. Which is really kind of cool.
Yes.
I would have joined the Hammock Club.
I probably would still be in it, no.
Trying to get in it, I'm trying to get in it somehow.
Yeah.
Flipping out of them.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes they're easier to get out of than in.
Yeah. Anything else for the park board?
That's it?
Okay, uh, county comprehensive plan.
This looks like a really big discussion, huh? I mean, I.
Well, what, what, I guess I don't know what.
Um, you know, it's a, sort of, it just, um, I mean, uh, Jose Dominguez had a lot of issues and questions. I mean, I, I have some, some questions too. I mean, I think it's a bigger discussion than, you know, was sensible after so many hours.
Well, I guess what, what's the, cause the, the planning and zoning board is working on the comprehensive plans. I guess I'm wondering what, what our issue is right now.
So I, I guess it's the question of, um, uh, you know, who planning and zoning is talking to. And I, you know, I mean, ultimately, it's something that we as a commission will have to adopt. And, um, you know, I would love to see, um, you know, the public brought in at an earlier stage so that, you know, uh, the public is involved in the very beginning of comprehensive planning. And so having a series of public meetings where you invite people to come in and to say, what's your vision of Clay County ten years from now? You know, what's your fondest dream? If you wanted your kids to move here or live here after, you know, they go to school, what, what would you want here for them? You know, to talk about parks, to talk about, um, yeah, I mean, I, um, bicycle trails. I mean, just to hear what the, what the public cares about.
Right, so, so they've been working on it for over a year now. And they've had public meetings every month.
But, but not, um.
We haven't specifically invited anybody.
Exactly.
But I don't know how you specifically invite public people.
Well, what you do is, and, you know, and this is.
This early.
Yeah, this early, especially this early. So you invite people in very early, as early as possible. And you can show them, like, I, 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 I love what's been done in terms of, um, uh, you know, setting down constraints and possibilities and so on, and getting data in there, and that's all really important. But, you know, just to give you one example of, uh, you know, I, sort of reading this, right? I, 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 I got to the part about how our number of senior citizens have decreased. Well, to me, that means something because I watch my friends one by one move out because there's no place for them to go after they can't keep their own house up anymore. And my friends are all talking about, where am I going to move? Like, you know, I mean, I'm, I, I, you know, some of my friends are seventy-five, eighty years old and, you know, they're, they have to leave the county unless they want to live in, you know, the assisted living place here, um, in town or Wakanda has a place as well. But what that says to me is, like, when I look at that population decline in this one age group, what that says to me is, that needs to be part of the plan. We need to say, you know, seeking opportunities to, right, provide more housing for elders so that, because every older person wants to stay in their community.
Right, but that's part of the city's plan. That's why they have all the duplexes and.
Right, but we're, but we're more than the city, right? We're Wakanda, where I read, where, I mean.
That I understand, but I mean.
Yeah.
The city has their own comprehensive plan.
Right.
Cause our, this comprehensive plan won't even cover the city or the joint jurisdiction area.
Right, right.
It's everything outside of that.
Right, but, but those are the kinds of things that I think come up. And things like, um, you know, fam, you know, what, what, what people's vision is of, I mean, it could be that people say, we, we don't want economic development, we want to keep this place rural, right? And then you might write a different plan, that if people came in and said, yeah, you know, the tax base, we need to expand the tax base. So it just, you know, and I think it also helps to bring people along so that when the comprehensive plan comes up, um, they support it because, you know, they feel as though they've had, had a voice. So, you know, when I think about like these, uh, you know, inviting the public in, there are people who do this really well, um, you know, uh, strategic planning people. And they start out by asking people for a vision and then they'll ask them for what, you know, what should goals look like? And they'll make some suggestions and, you know, at the end of, say, you know, uh, a two-hour evening meeting that you've invited people to, but also pushed some people. I mean, there are some people who are countywide leaders, they're known in their communities and you want them in the room because you want somebody from Irene to be able to say, what Irene really needs is, maybe it's roads, maybe, you know.
So Betty, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that would seem to me to be really good feedback to give to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Drew. Because I think that that's the stage in the process it's at, um, if you want to get in front of that before it comes to you guys.
Yeah, but Travis, you're the, you're the representative.
I know, but we've sent letters out to those entities. And maybe one has responded. I mean, the townships have been notified.
Yeah, but what, what, what Jose Dominguez is saying is that they haven't had any input.
No, they haven't yet. Because just like when the city did theirs, we were invited to one meeting with all the other Clay River Water, the REA, places like that. But we've had public meetings and this room's been full, the last six meetings we've had.
And can I also interrupt just from a department head standpoint? I would take exception to discussion of something that I'm doing with my, I mean, if there are complaints or concerns about the way the state's attorney's office is addressing our work, but I'm using as an analogy. If you want something different to be done with Drew and the planning and zoning, I think it's more appropriate to certainly invite him here to express those concerns in a public fashion, but also start with him. And that's where I would hope that those concerns would be started with me in my office rather than a discussion in a public meeting about something that's being done in my office.
Yeah, but I, I, I think this is really, uh, this is really like the Planning and Zoning Commission, but ultimately what the Planning and Zoning Commission produces, we, I mean, we, we have to agree to. And I, you know.
But if you haven't expressed those concerns to them, I just think that, like I'm saying, like, that's where I think it should start, not here in a commission meeting where Drew isn't present to hear that.
Okay.
But a year ago, this board gave them that direction to go and, and to do this and handle it. I mean, you may not know all of this, but things have been put into process before you got on.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to do is not to criticize, but to suggest, um, that there is. Yeah, so I guess, uh, what I'm trying to do is not to criticize, but to suggest, um, that there is a process that's commonly used in planning, early on in the process, that can help to guide and, um, uh, you, you know, really create some energy and motivation behind a plan, just to give you an example, um, when I first moved here in the early two thousands, they were, um, the city of Vermillion was, um, rewriting their planning and zoning, um, or, I'm sorry, their, um, their comprehensive plan of development, and they brought in a few consultants to run these meetings, and the early planning, um, had, uh, you know, talked about certain streets and roadways. People came in and talked about what, what they really cared about, what was most important to them, and so those things got written into the plan. Um, and, and it was, it was really a beautiful process, so that when the comprehensive plan of development was ultimately passed, it was like, people were so enthusiastic, so I, you know, I, I don't mean this as a criticism at all, I'm just suggesting that this would be a great time um, to do that, and, you know, I'd be glad to, you know, if the Planning and Zoning Board invited me, I'd be glad to go and talk about it. Um, you know, I've, I've done strategic planning with communities in the past, and people really do get excited, and it, it, it gets, um, press coverage, people come in and they, you know, I mean, they talk about things like, um, bikes, I mean, that was one of the things that came out of that plan that I participated in the early meetings of, was that, you know, Vermillion wound up with that, uh, you know, bike trails.
I'd have to correct you, that wasn't necessarily in the early part of that planning process, I was on city planning and zoning from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand, we started talking about it in mid-two thousand, uh, nineteen ninety-six, so the meetings you're talking about is when I left the board, that was three and a half years into the process.
And that happened the same time the last time.
And they were really, I mean, those were great meetings, um, they were really, really well done.
So, it's not necessarily early in the process, when they did hold those meetings, have those meetings.
Because I was on the city planning and zoning after he was, and then they brought it up, in fact, it, right when I got off, we were working on it, then the Corona hit, or a virus hit, and that changed things, but they, we were in the process of going through, going through it again, and correcting things, each thing, and then the idea was, once we got that all corrected, then they were gonna have discussions with the, with the public, invite the public in. Now, I didn't say, our meetings were always published, just like your guys, is that they all know that, that, that when they're coming on, and anybody, and everybody could come, it was wide open, it wasn't just for the people that were on the committee, and so, and we did have one or two people that stopped in with something that they were concerned about, but that was as far as it went, but we went through it every time, every meeting, we went through parts of it, till, and but then, of course, I got off, so with, I, they hadn't got to the public meetings.
Yep.
And then with the virus, everything, it's just kinda.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the funny thing is, that the, that the city Planning and Zoning Committee is upset they haven't been invited, because it's, it's the same process that they used when they did their comprehensive plan, and they're, I'm not gonna say they don't want anybody to show up at the joint one, but we're not doing that in the, on the joint comprehensive plan, the city's never brought up that we should have all these people coming in every meeting, they've actually changed it to a small group, so we can get through some of the stuff that the boards are arguing about. So I mean, there's, there is a process, it may not be the one that you like, but it's the process that they've been tasked with.
Right.
Yeah, so I, you know, that's just my.
I guess, I don't, I agree with you, Betty, it's from the standpoint that this is, could be a wider discussion, and I think now it's to the point is that when they have their meetings, when they're discussing this, then you should be, you go there, voice your opinion, i- it, you know, because you probably got some good ideas, I'm not saying you don't, and so that's the time to do it, you know, and then if, and you do open it up to the public, so.
Oh, God, yes.
Anybody can come.
So the process I'm talking about is really different than just having a planning and zoning meeting in public, right?
Okay.
So I, you know, and, and it, it, it's a suggestion, um, you know, which generally works to.
But that's what we've been talking about, is what, what the public wants, I mean, the, the biggest hot topic right now is a, is having a campground. I mean, that's, that's what the last six meetings have pretty much been about, there's people who want it, and there's people who don't want it. So I mean, that's, that's the sticking point we're on right now on the comprehensive plan, trying to figure out what to do there.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, people who are not involved in that discussion would probably have something to say about it as well, you know, is, is this, uh, you know, so anyway, that's, um, uh, you know, just my, my suggestion.
And they got triggered by the very first red line said, this'll govern Clay County and the city of Vermillion. We can't find anybody who, I mean, everybody I've talked to, they're like, well, how did that get put in there? So I mean, it's a rough draft, and that's, they're getting, they're getting upset by a rough draft, nothing's final.
Yeah, so will somebody talk to them?
To the city, Jose and I have already sat down and had.
Oh, good, 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 good.
He did, we did that before this ever got sent out.
That helps enormously.
Because I asked him about that, I was like, I have no idea where that come from, and I, I don't know if it was in the old one, which he looked and it wasn't. So I was like, I don't know, Seacog put it in there for some reason, just for the, um,
Argumentative.
Just for the simple fact, because we have a joint jurisdiction area, that it would help, help govern both those entities.
Here's my markup, some Jose's memo, I've got, I've got a number of comments on that too.
All right, so, uh, you know, I don't know if, do we, is there some action we're supposed to take, or?
On the count, no.
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 It's irrational, like, wasn't it?
Yeah. And like Drew, Jose is, uh, well, for lack of a better term, he's the kicking post. I mean, he doesn't get to make any of those decisions, but he gets to, he gets to bring forth the, the bad news, I mean, it's, they're in the position of where you kill the messenger. Even though he has nothing, I mean, he has to do what the board tells him to do.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I respect his positions, uh, I.
And don't, but I'd want his position.
Well, yeah, and I, I'd, I'd argue a few minor points that, that, uh, that he's pointed out, and I understand.
That all come from the board, that, that's not his personal opinion in there.
Yeah.
He just got to deliver the message.
Sure.
So, okay, uh, joint jurisdiction has been put on hold till June.
Can I talk about personnel in executive session?
Yeah, unless it's five o'clock yet.
Going to executive session for personal.
Personnel.
Personnel issues, personal, personnel issues.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, we're in executive session. Okay, Dick.
Move to come out of executive session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, we're in regular session, anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, we have to.
Oh, yeah.
We're just gonna, um, we're gonna allow the state's attorney to go forward with the hiring process.
Okay.
And hope for the best, so. Now, let's entertain.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, roll call.
And that's to adjourn, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, meeting adjourned, till next Thursday.
I don't know if I want to sit here anymore.
Well, that's.